It's five fifteen, I'm calling to order the meeting for the Ocean View School District Board of Trustees meeting for September twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty one. Roll call. Trustee Briscoe. Madam Clerk. Present. Vice President.
Present.
Trustee Westwell. And I am here for, and trustee Briscoe is absent at the moment. Okay, we are now at item C, agenda adoption. Regular Board of Trustees meeting of September twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty one is before us for action. Is there a motion?
I'll move.
Thank you.
I will second.
Thank you. Any discussion, Madam Clerk?
No.
Vice President?
Nope.
Trustee Westwell?
No.
And I have no discussion, we'll go to the vote. Madam Clerk?
Aye.
Vice President?
Aye.
Trustee Westwell? And I'm an aye, it passes four one with trustee Briscoe absent. And that takes us to D, closed session. Madam Clerk, will you please read the closed session items?
Yes, thank you for recognizing me, Madam President. We're now at D, closed session. The public is invited to comment on the identified items listed under closed session prior to the adjournment to closed session. Comments shall be limited to three minutes each. In order to address the board of trustees, members of the public may choose to: One, complete the online comment card here at www.obsd.org/comment, no later than three P M for comments regarding closed session agenda items. Or two, wait outside the boardroom, the address is listed above in this agenda, at five P M until you're invited into the boardroom to make your public comment regarding closed session agenda items. Masks must be worn inside the boardroom. And here are the items for consideration. D one, Government Code Section five four nine five six point nine, D one, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, O A H consolidated case numbers two zero two, one zero one, zero two one five, and two zero two, one zero five, zero four five one. And D two, Government Code Section five four nine five seven point six, conference with labor negotiators, agency designated representative Reagan Hedrick, Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, and the employee organizations to be discussed this evening are C S C A and O B T A. That concludes the information for closed session, Madam President.
Thank you. I don't believe we have any public comments for closed session, is that correct?
That is correct, we do not have any this evening.
Okay, given that, we will now go to closed session at five seventeen.
Okay, I think we are. There we go. Okay, it is 6:01 and I am calling this meeting back to order. We are returning for closed session and there is an item to report. Madam Clerk?
Yes, Madam President, but before I begin, I'd like to ask you if you could click that button on your screen so that it takes away on the big screen. If you see that.
That's not me.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. The following action was taken in closed session. Number one, a motion was made by President Singer and seconded by Trustee Briscoe and carried by the following roll call vote to approve the settlement agreement to resolve special education due process matter. OAH case number 2021010215 in the amount of $225,000 and to discharge all future legal obligations to this litigant from February 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2024. And the roll call vote was as follows. Briscoe, aye. Clayton Tarvin, aye. Singer, aye. Souders, aye. And Westwell, aye. Madam President, that concludes the information from closed session.
Thank you. We are now at F. Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand and join us at the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready? Begin. And that takes us to G. Introductions. Dr. Hanson, is there any introductions?
There are none at this time.
Thank you. H. Minutes. H1. Regular Board of Trustees Meeting, September 14, 2021. It's before us for action. Is there a motion?
Motion approved.
Thank you. Is there a second? Any discussion, Trustee Briscoe? Madam Clerk?
No.
Vice President? Trustee Westwell? I have no discussion. We'll go to the vote. Trustee Briscoe?
Aye.
Madam Clerk?
Aye.
Vice President?
Aye.
Trustee Westwell? Nomin- aye. It passes 5-0 unanimously. Okay, we are now at I. Time Certain. I1605 PBIS Awards Recognition. Dr. Hanson.
Well, good evening. I'd like to turn the program over to Dr. Hofer, who is going to introduce our presentations for this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I am thrilled to be here tonight. Come on up with our Director Barb Davis. Thank you so much. I am thrilled to be here tonight. Come on up with our Director Barb Davis. And one of her key roles is to work on school climate, school culture, and we're thrilled tonight to recognize some schools who have been recognized by the state. So I'm going to hand it off to Mrs. Davis.
Good evening, Board President Singer, Board of Trustees, Dr. Hanson and Cabinet. Tonight, we are celebrating six schools who have received and been recognized, received recognition by the California PBIS Coalition. The California PBIS Coalition recognizes schools in California for implementing positive behavioral interventions and supports, or PBIS, with fidelity to the national framework. PBIS emphasizes school-wide systems of support that include proactive strategies for defining, teaching, and supporting appropriate behavior, student behaviors, to create more positive school environments. College View, Hope View, Lake View, Star View, Golden View, and Marine View worked throughout the 2020-21 school year on improving their positive behavioral interventions and supports at their schools. Using the principles of PBIS, teams from each school participated in a process of self-assessing their current implementation of PBIS and then set goals to improve their implementation. The school teams communicated the implementation goals with their staffs and monitored the progress. The outcome resulted in College View, Hope View, Lake View, Star View, and Golden View receiving a bronze level state recognition and Marine View earning a silver level recognition for implementing positive behavioral interventions and supports with fidelity based on that national PBIS framework. Receiving the California PBIS bronze and silver level state recognition is acknowledgement of the staff's dedication to improving the implementation of PBIS at their school sites and their commitment to the behavior, social, emotional, and academic achievement of all their students. So first school we'd like to recognize is College View and Principal Elaine Bernie.
All right. Good evening, Board President Patricia Singer, Board of Trustees, Superintendent Hanson, Cabinet and other guests. My name is Elaine Bernie and I proudly serve as the College View Principal. Our PBIS team consists of Jordan Visser, Karen Keller, Sarah Bruce, Lisa Van Willis, Bianca Converse, Vanessa Sanchez, and me. Joining me here tonight are team members Jordan Visser, Karen Keller, and Sarah Bruce. College View is most proud of solidifying our entire PBIS program to include our year-long plan for teaching the social, emotional learning competencies each week. Teaching our traits and rebranding that includes the focus of our College View pride. We have added classified stakeholders on our PBIS leadership team. Additionally, we always serve as role models for our students and our staff is intentional in demonstrating our school, school-wide behavioral expectations. These descriptions of the expected staff behaviors are captured in what we call a PB, our staff PBIS matrix. Finally, all staff are trained in our site program at the beginning of the year as well as all new staff throughout the year. With our hard work, dedication, and thorough student teaching and training, College View is excited to see students exhibiting positive behaviors and positive active engagement.
Congratulations. Now, if the board can come down, we're going to take a picture.
Our next school to be recognized is Hope View with Principal Christy Lucky.
All right. Good evening, members of the board and cabinet. We represent Hope View and we are the team. I am Christy Lucky, the principal. The team I have with me this evening is Holly Shogren and Kristen Dixon. And we also have Gus, our support providing dog. Our members of our team consist of Holly Shogren, Emily Yamaguchi, Kristen Dixon, Julie Brokus, Marcy McLaughlin, of course, myself. This evening, we are excited to be here. We're very proud of this accolade. We are most proud of how our students feel like they are part of our community. We focus on noticing the good choices that students make. We highlight student success daily, weekly, and monthly. And our students learn the value of volunteering and giving back to our community. And not only with this, but the PBIS community we have is growing intellectually and emotionally with for our students. And we are proud to share this with and share this with our community to show them what a great place Hope View is to be. So thank you for the support.
Congratulations. Board, join me.
Our next school to be recognized is Lake View with Principal Child Vanderlinden.
Good evening, Board and Cabinet. That's a hard act to follow. Anytime you have to follow an act with a dog, so. Thank you for having us tonight. We're really excited and we are very excited about this award. We've worked hard for it. Members on our team this last year was Carrie McLaughlin, Alexa Mota, Mary Abbott, Candace Ingle, and Sandy Lewis. Sandy Lewis is here with me tonight. So Lake View utilizes PBIS daily. We start the year with a PBIS school tour. Where students move throughout the school and learn the expected behaviors throughout. For instance, in the bathroom, the behaviors that are expected, in the hallways, at dismissal time. So we give them just a really good idea of their behavior expectations throughout school. Having a school-wide system in place where everyone understands the expectation creates a safe and secure culture for all of the students. Thank you for having us.
No dog. Where's the dog?
And our next school to be recognized is Starview with Principal Paul Craft.
Thank you. President Singer, School Board of Trustees, Dr. Hanson and her cabinet, thank you for having our schools here tonight to share a little bit about PBIS at our schools. On our team, we have Laura Fuller, Janine Cariante, Melanie Yoder, Alicia Mariano, Leslie Flores, and Jen Mullen. And tonight, I have Melanie Yoder here with me. The purpose of PBIS, of course, is to create a positive school environment where students feel safe, they feel respected, where they can respect one another, and they have an ability to flourish and learn in a safe environment. One thing that Starview is really excited about is our intentional instruction of our recess games, our PE games, our lunchtime and our recess procedures. Just as teachers are intentional about teaching math and science, gate instruction and writing, our teachers are intentional in teaching the recess rules, the game rules. We actually have a morning where all the classes rotate through various stations on the playgrounds and the teachers actually demonstrate the rules. So the teachers, the students understand the expectations and they feel safe, they know the rules, and they can all have a good time at Starview. Thank you very much.
Congratulations. Yes.
Would you let Starview know in the other schools, it's okay and it's safe for the rest of the meeting?
All right, guys, are welcome to stay there.
And our last school that received the bronze level PBIS recognition is Golden View.
Thank you so much for having us here, for this amazing recognition this evening. Golden View's amazing PBIS team is made up of our fantastic Gwen Conton, first grade teacher, Julie Newbert, four or five gate teacher, Lolly Garcia, our school office manager, last year's principal, Elaine Bernie, and myself, Lori Florgan. At Golden View, we are most proud of enhancing our entire PBIS program to include a staff PPI matrix. The staff matrix and guides all staff to set the example for our students. All staff are trained in the site PBIS program at the beginning of the year as well as new staff that comes on board throughout the year. In addition, we are excited to have added a classified staff member to our PBIS team this year to ensure that all staff have a voice and are involved in creating the positive environment around our school site. In addition, we love utilizing our school farm to enhance our social, emotional, and PBIS program. We are now very excited to be moving on to earning the silver award. Yay. Thank you.
Our last school that received the state PBIS recognition received the silver recognition. And Sarah Shively, principal, is here to speak to that, and she brought students who would like to talk about PBIS and Marine View for you.
Okay, congratulations.
Good evening, Board President Patricia Singer, members of the board, Dr. Hanson and cabinet members. Marine View School was honored to receive the bronze recognition in 2019, but of course, we wanted to expand our program and reach for silver this past year. So over the course of the last year, we worked to grow our PBIS team to include representation and input from all staff and students. And Marine View, our staff is intentional in teaching and demonstrating, modeling our school expectations, and we continue to reinforce students for exhibiting these expected behaviors. We are excited for what this coming year will bring as we kicked off the school year with several PBIS activities, which included a welcome week and orientation for all of our students as well as the implementation of the energy bus for schools. Next, I would like to introduce two of our students, Molly Seraphin and Emily Mayer, who are going to show you how we seek input and incorporate student voice.
Welcome.
Hi, my name is Emily Mayer.
And I'm Molly Seraphin, and we are part of Marine View's ASB class.
The ASB students represent the student population by making incentives and promoting different activities around campus that we want more students to participate in. For example, we put up posters around the school for different spirit days and sports activities. Also, the announcements we make each morning keep all of the students updated about important information and upcoming events. One of the ways ASB seeks student input from our peers is by asking students for their opinions about different school topics or activities they would like to do during their lunch breaks. Another example is going into their classrooms and asking if they have any questions, concerns, or ideas about the topics. Some of the topics that we seek input from our peers include ideas about spirit days or different improvements that we could use around the school. We try to increase student involvement in activities in spiritware by asking for their thoughts and opinions either during lunchtime or class time.
Some ways we share this information with administration, teachers, school, and the community are by relaying this information to our ASB class and teacher. If these ideas are good ones, we will invite Mrs. Shively into class so that we can share our ideas and plan them out. We then can also make a morning announcement telling all of the students about some of our new plans or activities. Some goals that we have this year to increase student voice are to show students how exciting and fun ASB is by going around classroom to classroom to make important announcements and ask for their opinions, but also tell them what we do in ASB. Another goal that we have to increase student voice is to post more surveys on the Marine View Pride Google Classroom and continue to put the social media posts from the Marine View Instagram account onto the Marine View Pride Google Classroom page so that the students can share their thoughts and opinions.
Thank you.
I would also, my apologies, I forgot to introduce the rest of the team that is here with me tonight. So we also have Julie Nichols, our Assistant Principal, and Jackie Fiorillo, one of our teachers who is on our PBIS team and our ASB teacher.
Thank you. Great job. Congratulations.
We do have our site set on gold for next year.
That was wonderful. Congratulations to all of the schools on their hard work with PBIS. We appreciate them all. Okay, and with that, we will now go on to. J. Public comments. Madam Clerk, will you please read the public comment section? Yes, thank you, Madam President. We're now at J. Public comments. At this time, members of the public may address the Board of Trustees regarding a matter of public interest within the subject matter jurisdiction of the governing board per Education Code 35145.5 and Government Code 54954.3. No action may be taken on comments of off-agenda items unless specifically authorized by law. In order to address the Board of Trustees, members of the public may choose to do one of the following. Number one, complete the optional online comment card here at www.obsd.org commentary. No later than 3:00 PM for comments. Comments shall be limited to three minutes per person. Or two, wait outside the boardroom. The address is listed above in the agenda at 5:45 PM until you're invited into the boardroom to make your public comment. Masks must be worn inside the boardroom. Comments shall be limited to three minutes per person. So I have a list of oral comments submitted online, and we have 19 total comments. And then I'm waiting to have the cards for the in-person comments. We have a total of eight. Okay. Just wondering if they're for specific items or just public comments. They look like they are. Let me go through them real fast. It looks like they are all for just public comments. They wish to speak at the beginning. And so. Okay, we can begin with those that are here in person so that they don't have to wait. And so we can begin this evening with a Ms. Heather Lenore.
Thank you. If I come across upset or passionate about the decisions you have made and the management of the district budget, it's because of how it impacts not only my family but the community at large. I will not apologize for exercising my democratic right to speak out and influence change in this district or community. Earlier today, I sent you each a copy of the petition that has been circulating regarding the reinstatement of affordable busing for all children in OBSD. I've also brought hard copies of statements from some of your constituents that have signed the petition. With close to 600 signatures and growing in a very short amount of time, it's obvious that many in the community agree that transportation services are vital to get our children to school safely. Unfortunately, it's missing a number of signatures from my friends and neighbors who work for OBSD and also feel strongly about the need for busing because they fear retribution if they speak out. And after my experience this past week, I can clearly see how they would feel that way. You are elected officials charged with the governing of this district. You signed up for this job. Our job as constituents is to hold you accountable. I don't want to. I don't want to be here, and in truth, I shouldn't have to be here if you were doing your jobs correctly. We are encouraged to write the board and attend board meetings and speak up with concerns. However, in speaking out for what I feel have been poor decisions, mismanagement of funds, and transparency issues, I have been bullied and disrespected on multiple levels by the board members of this board. Trustee Briscoe replied to a letter I sent to the board with a snarky, condescending email filled with antiquated ideology copying multiple news reporters. For what reason, I have no idea. And then even worse, I've been personally attacked by Gina Clayton Tarvin in a public forum, harassed, called out my name, and publicly shamed with the intent to silence and intimidate. Gina Clayton Tarvin, as I have been learning, has a long history of intimidation, misrepresentation, and retaliation. She has twisted information to make herself out to be a victim with unfounded claims and outright lies. This last week, she has posted numerous times on social media calling me out by my first and last name, calling me a racist against Italians, and accusing me of racially profiling her as an Italian when in fact my own family is Italian. Intended or not, for tyrannical rants or representation of this school district and school board, isn't this what we teach our children not to do? And evidence that this type of behavior has been going on since 2017 and before, and that all of you are aware of it. This leads me to believe that you not only condone Miss Tarvin's outrageous behavior, but by allowing it to continue, you have become accomplices in her actions. Gina, along with fellow board members, are not acting as respected elected leaders. Instead, in my opinion, are acting as a corrupt totalitarian bureaucracy riddled with dangerous self-serving egos. I ask for immediate cease and desist of harassment from the board members, and if failure to comply will result in a swift and immediate legal action. I'm a firm believer that when there is a will, there is a way. If you truly care about the children in this community, you will find a way to improve and expand the services offered rather than make dramatic cuts that adversely impact our families. I encourage you all to put your egos aside, stop playing dirty political games, and do what is needed for this community. Do the right thing and stop harassing constituents. Do the right thing and reinstate affordable busing for our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. The next speaker is Angela Zenzola. Welcome.
Hi, thank you. Imagine my delight when Dr. Hanson returned my email with a phone call. She informed me of the dates that President Singer had told us. The board notified us of when busing became an issue. Those dates were February 18th and August 28th. Obviously, we were all under a pandemic, something we've never experienced, so it really felt like it was kind of slid under the rug for us. We didn't have any real formal notification sent to the parents as well as no survey. Speaking of survey, the survey that we received for the busing and the $250 monthly fee was not very well received. A lot of the parents told me that they were not going to respond. I don't know what kind of response that the district received, but some said they were so insulted that they weren't even going to respond. I have, we were passing out flyers. I think you received those flyers. And as we were doing that, we had some parent comments, so I would like to read those to you today. Larry, the dance dad, is so upset that he has to arrive at school at 1:30 to get a parking spot so that he can get his daughter to dance at 2:30. We get out of Marineview at 2:10, and it takes him more than 20 minutes to get his daughter to gothard. So she's very stressed out, making him stressed out. And he also says he's very stressed out because other parents arrive late and they're double parking, so he said, "Most of the other parents should come earlier and not double park and make it an issue." One Harborview mom told me she had two kids at Marineview that were waiting for her to pick them up. So she picks up her youngest at Harborview, and the older children wait 30 minutes at Marineview until she could get there. One dad with English as a second language kept repeatedly thanking me for trying to get our bus service reinstated. One mom said, "I'm on state aid with two kids. How can I pay for a bus?" Another mom states, "250 is more than my car payment." And the last mom said that her daughter told her, "Mom, taking the bus was the best part of my school day." So I would again, thank you.
Thank you so much. Next. Next speaker is Gigi Nguyen.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Good evening. I'm here again. I'm a single mom who came to this school two weeks ago to address my outrage that you defunded the kids' school bus. Gina, you promised that you would come to Marineview to observe the traffic in the morning, drop off in the afternoon pickup. You made a comment on social media forum that you went to observe in the morning of September 17th, and the morning traffic was light. I'm not sure if that flippant remark is to minimize the situation or not, but let me just say, school starts at 7:45, and I have to drop my kid off at between 7:00 and 7:10 to avoid traffic and chaos. When I picked up my daughter later that day, there was absolute chaos with kids everywhere, car traffic backed up, parents double parked, trash truck, and also a mail truck trying to get through. Did you see that, Gina? Because I didn't see you make that comment. This morning, on my way to driving my daughter to school, I saw two seventh-grade boys crossing the intersection of Graham and Glenstone. One boy cut right in front of a car that nearly hit him. That was too close to call, and my heart skipped a beat. The traffic caused no buses as dangerous chaos, serious possible fatalities. We're holding our breath daily that no child is harmed due to this congestion caused because we have no buses. And yes, I'm upset because I see this kind of stuff and you don't. And don't sit here and tell me it's okay. Meanwhile, the buses, kids from Oakville Mesa View, which is less than a mile and a half from the school, yet you expect children that live two or four miles away from Marineview to find their transportation, suggesting them to ride a city bus or bike or walk or carpool, which is not an alternative for any means. To walk from some of the houses would be more than one hour to get to school. If you want to eliminate busing, then you need to consider redistricting so that children will not have to walk bikes such far distance. Sending our children on the city bus for with destitute, often drug-induced individuals who could be possible sex offenders or child predators is not a legitimate choice of transportation. Providing busing for select schools in the district and not all schools is a form of discrimination. Other non-rural school districts in Orange County like Irvine, they're able to budget and find ways to transport their kids. In Irvine, they offer extensive multiple-school bus routes to pick up, and their annual fee is $390. You're asking us to pay $2,500 a year, and then you add it on top of that, Kids Club. We don't want Kids Club. We're here because we want school buses for our kids that's affordable. $2,500 annually compared to $300 and $400 from other schools, it's unacceptable. I can't even believe that you sent that survey and you think that that's acceptable to us. I'm here to say, we are here because we're asking for transportation for our kids to be safe. I don't understand how you missed that boat altogether. Lastly, here's what I have to say. We received extra federal COVID funding that were available that we never had before. Millions of extra dollars have been provided, and you can't figure it out?
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes.
Ms. Nguyen, you mentioned my name several times, so I did want to address what you said. When I was there in the morning at Marineview, the traffic was light, but that doesn't mean that it's light every day. It was only light the day I was there, apparently, according to your observations. I was there after school, and it was heavier after school, so you are correct. I saw what you saw after school. That's all I wanted to say.
Well, I need you all to do something about it, and I don't want to hear any more excuses because it's not acceptable to us.
Thank you. Next. Next speaker is Gretchen Burgentine. Welcome.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Gretchen Burgentine, and I'm the mother of an eighth-grade gate student at Mesa View, and I would like this on record. I am here tonight as a follow-up to my last statement at the previous board meeting to participate in the Let Them Breathe Peaceful Mask Choice Rally that we just had and to advocate for mask choice. As a member of the Let Them Breathe organization, I want to remind you that what you are doing toward children is harmful, abusive, and unconstitutional. I would also like to remind you that we are a constitutional republic that guarantees protection of individual freedom, liberty, and due process. As I'm sure you are aware, this Thursday, there is an emergency hearing where the Let Them Breathe organization will be asking a judge for a temporary restraining order against the state mask mandates. These ridiculous policies are preventing our children from going to school in an optimal learning environment. Furthermore, you are assisting the state by relying on masks to prevent COVID, which is creating a dangerous environment by overpromising the effectiveness of masks. I am here advocating for my son to exercise his God-given right to freedom of choice in wearing a mask. I believe it should be up to the parent and child to determine if they should wear a mask. After all, we know our kids best, and please remember, this is America. Here are some interesting facts regarding masks. A group of parents sent their masks, their kids' masks, to a lab for testing, and these dangerous pathogens were found on them. Pneumonia, tuberculosis, meningitis, keratitis, E. coli, and pentago and staph infections, just to name a few. In closing, please, my child, my choice, together, let's be on the right side of history. I'm asking you to vote on this tonight and give it the fair vote it deserves. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Erin Eisenbach. Welcome.
Hi. My name is Erin. I'm a single mom. I have a little girl. I am not from here. We moved here four years ago. We started at Westmont. Amazing school. Vapa. Love it. You guys have embraced me with open arms. My child, open arms. We've, I've tried my hardest to immerse her in everything. Everything's been really well taken care of. Bus service, 100 bucks. Single mom, not always easy. Totally willing to pay $100 for bus service to get my child to school safely and on time. I know where she is at all moments. I know everything's taken care of. Given a pandemic, everyone's world gets turned upside down. We don't know which way is up. We're making it all work the best way we can. I'm trying to work and provide for my child. The hybrid schedule, I made it work. I thought this is temporary. It's fine. I can do this. I can take off from work, pick up my child, get friends involved. Everyone can work together. This year, I show up at registration one week before school to find out there's no bus service. It's canceled. No one told me. I didn't get any notification. There was nothing. And I get a million emails all the time about stupid stuff that I could care less about. Oh, great job today. Woo, whatever. I never get important information like this. This is very important. So now, my whole world is turned upside down. We live two and a half miles from school. My daughter goes to Springview. We live by Belatera. There is no way I'm going to have my child walk two and a half miles home from school every day. There's homeless people. There's a ton of traffic. It's very dangerous. I see so many times when kids are walking from Crossing Edwards, they're almost run over because traffic is crazy. But then, you know what? There's not even any kids for her to walk home with. There's no other buddies to even do the buddy system because no one else is walking as far as that is, and that's still in the school district. But when I called the Transportation Department to ask why there's no school bus system, they just say, "Oh, it was canceled." It was too expensive. I don't think it's too expensive. You want our kids to show up and learn and be happy and healthy. Well, then provide transportation to get them there to and from. That's where they can build communities. We've had a pandemic rage through everything and ruin everything. Let's build up the community again. Let's start showing our kids that we care about them, that we want them to get to and from school safely, that we want them to meet friends on the bus and talk about their day and have that community. I just think that not having a bus transportation is horrible, and I will never, ever put my child on a city bus. And for you guys to come up with that as an alternative is a disgrace.
Thank you. Next speaker is Galen Pickett. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Board. My name is Galen Pickett. I'm a professor of physics at California State University, Long Beach. I've been teaching and researching since 1999 at Long Beach. I have PhD in physics from the University of Chicago and an undergraduate degree from MIT in physics. Three out of four of my children went through Oceanview School District. I have a house in the district boundaries. Between 10% and 20% of my house's value is determined by the quality of this district, and I'm very well pleased with that. Two weeks ago, I came to talk to you about why masks are both safe and effective as a materials business. I would love to give you a 50-minute seminar. That's going to take 20 so different trips to this podium, and I don't have that time today. But I did say that there were three issues, three science issues that needed to be addressed to convince me as a materials physics expert that masks were ineffective. First, you'd have to tell me what I know about hydrodynamics is wrong. Then you'd have to tell me about what I know about diffusion is wrong. And then you have to tell me about how I know about, whether I know about the interaction between solitophobic and solithobic services, why that's all wrong. Today, I want to talk to you about hydrodynamics. This is roughly a meter. Take an object that's about a meter large, and you drop it from my height, the height where particles would be invented from my mouth. Takes about two-thirds of a second to hit the ground. Take something that's 100 times small, a centimeter. Still takes about two-thirds of a second to hit the ground. Take that centimeter and cut it into something that is a tenth as large, that's a millimeter, and further cut it a tenth of a millimeter. Now, that's the width of a human hair. That's 100 microns. Those particles released from the vicinity of my mouth take three minutes to hit the ground. Basically, those particles will hit the ground near my feet, so as long as you mop the floors after I leave, you're okay. We take that 100 micron particle and make it smaller by one factor of 10 more. We don't get a factor of 10 in the following time. We get a factor of 100. We go from three minutes to 300 minutes or five hours. In a closed space with uncertain ventilation, you might as well be kissing anyone who had been in that room, speaking, laughing, talking in the last five hours. Now, let's take that 10 microns and make it a factor of 10 smaller. One month. Another factor of 10 goes from five hours to 500 hours. Now, we're looking at four weeks. So the Let Them Breathe people are suggesting that you put a bucket by the door at every schoolroom, and every kid that walks in spits in the bucket. And after a month of that, you take the bucket, stir it up, put it in the cups, and ask who wants, who wants a sip? That is what is being asked for. Now, normally, that's not a dangerous thing.
Thank you so much.
In a pandemic, it's deadly.
Thank you for sharing your perspective. Next speaker is Ms. Kathy Carrick. Welcome.
Thank you. I live in and pay taxes in this district, and I'm here to voice my opinion on the appalling busing situation and the embarrassing behavior by the board. For this district to attempt to make up a budget deficit on the backs of the students and parents is shameful. We are all well aware of the low-income folks living in the Oakview neighborhood who will not be affected by this horrible decision. But it seems the board, while professing undying devotion for Oakview students, is totally blind to the needs of the rest of their district. Yes, the other 92% of your district also have financial challenges that preclude them from spending your proposed nearly $6,000 annually to get their kids' transportation and appropriate care. Open your eyes, board members. What happened to "We care about all the children"? It's time to walk the walk and not just talk the talk. Additionally, I cannot ignore the totally out-of-control, online vitriolic comments by Ms. Clayton Tarvin. I don't know how this board allows your reputation to be sullied this way. You have previously censured other board members for much less. To bully and harass hard-working parents on social media simply because they have the courage to disagree with her is absolutely despicable. Please name one other school board member in Huntington Beach that has an equally narcissistic online presence. Oh, that's right, you can't because there are none. This district deserves better leadership. I implore you to do something to stop this unprofessional child I implore you to do something to stop this unprofessional childish behavior and focus on the work of the district. I'm beginning to believe Ms. Clayton Tarvin's strategy is to frighten and intimidate her constituents. Her need to constantly be in the public eye is tearing apart the fabric of this district, destroying its reputation, and ruining any possibility of being able to work with school families. Let me remind you that you are here to serve this community. It's time for all members to set aside their personal political aspirations and act accordingly with proper respect and decorum to the parents and citizens they serve. Thank you.
Ma'am, I have a question before you leave. You, I want to make sure I heard correctly. You mentioned something like a $6,000 figure annually. Can you tell me where you got that figure?
Well, from the things I've seen, you're asking some survey that was sent out proposed $250 a month for a busing fee, which would be 2,500 annually, and $330 a month for school care of some sort, probably before and after, or something like that, which would be $3,300 a year. So add those two together, and they're nearly 6,000.
I just want to clarify, the survey was for 2,500 annually for just transportation or the option of Kids Club. It wasn't 6,000 for transportation. I just wanted to clarify that. So thank you.
I, that, that's how I interpreted it. So if that's incorrect, that's incorrect. That's fine.
Thank you for clarifying. I appreciate it.
Okay.
Yes, Trustee Briscoe. One moment, please. Yes.
I was curious if a child were enrolled in Kids Club, why would they need busing home when the pickup is at 6 o'clock after the workday is over?
I, I have no idea. That's what, that, those are the figures I saw in online comments. Um, you know, it's been a while since I've been a school parent. I am a taxpayer in this district. But when my kids went to school, they didn't go to public school, but I would drop them off in the morning. They had daycare in the morning. And then I dropped, you know, went to pick them up. They had daycare. So if a bus is taking you early in the morning, maybe you have daycare in the morning or something. I don't know.
Okay. Well, I appreciate your coming tonight. I believe the model was an either-or model utilized.
Then, if, if my figures are incorrect, then I retract that. I still think $2,500 a year is way out of bounds for, you know, some of these single moms that have spoken. I mean,
I'm, I'm not, my role is to, I can ask a clarifying question, but I can't dialogue. But you've answered. Thank you.
I understand. Thank you.
Okay, Madam President, we have another speaker, but she wishes to speak at O6, so, I believe, although it's checked off for number one, I wish to speak in public comments. And then, in number two, it says O6. So I'm not really sure. Would the public speaker like to speak now or at O6?
Yes.
Okay, please, go ahead. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Lauren Hernandez, and my public comment is in reference to item number O6 on the agenda. And I would like my comment to be stated for the record. I am a parent and taxpayer and have two children in this district. First, I would like to thank you for adding the let-them-breathe board resolution to tonight's agenda. As you know, let-them-breathe and reopen California schools filed a joint lawsuit against the state of California, challenging the state's facial coverings, asymptomatic testing, and close-contact quarantine guidance for K through 12 schools. The hearing date is set for two days from now, September 30. Should the judge rule in favor of let-them-breathe, this will end the statewide mask mandate. Knowing this, I urge you to please take this resolution seriously and give it the fair vote that it deserves. Our district should be standing up for the rights of all parents, students, teachers, and staff, not just those who agree with them. COVID is not a public health issue. It is a civil rights issue. If a parent wants to mask their child, that is their right. If I wish to not, that is my right. Both parents' rights must be honored. In order to achieve that, the board must uphold the U.S. Constitution. Our civil liberties should not be sacrificed at the altar of public health or public education. Families must assume responsibility for their own healthcare choices, meaning COVID mitigation strategies should be encouraged but not mandated. And no child or parent should be publicly shamed for choosing what is best for their family. I will leave you with the definition of liberty. The state of being free within a society from oppressive restrictions imposed by authority on one's way of life, behavior, or political views. Again, thank you for taking the time to listen to me. I sincerely appreciate you placing this item on the agenda. And I do hope a motion will be made and for the resolution to pass with a majority vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, I believe we have done about approximately 24 minutes or so, and we, our board policy is one hour of public comments. So we can start doing some of the written ones and see how many we can get through.
Okay. So, Madam President, I'm going to set the clock to 26 minutes.
Okay.
I will start.
Okay. Okay. Stephanie Malcho. How is there not funding for transportation for children to get to and from school? $250 a month for a child to ride a bus is crazy. This is a public school. Next comment is from a Rose. Hello. I hope you're all having a good day. So after last board meeting, we received an email. Read transportation. I find it ridiculous that the board would send such a survey with no option to input our comments regarding the two options you were given. To pay 200 or something dollars a month is out of the question. The district received a once-time COVID fund relief. Why are you using that money for transportation? Our families from Harborview, and I'm sure for the rest of the district had or is still having some hardship during this pandemic. So I feel like we are entitled to use those funds for transportation. Why would you even consider suggesting for our children to take a public transportation exposing them to COVID like that? We don't know who goes on the bus, and the bus does not sanitize or even clean every time someone goes on or off. Having a public, having, having children in public transportation is not an option. I will not, exposing my child like that, and I am very disappointed that the board doesn't consider those high risks of COVID. Also, last board meeting, some comments were made or suggestions regarding parents having to figure out the situation. I'm sorry, but I don't make anywhere near what any board member does. So unfortunately, I cannot pay $350 for daycare. Another thing, it seems like you guys were trying to use kids being left home alone as an excuse why we don't have transportation. Most of a child to be left alone at home, and this is what I came across. In California, there is no specific law regarding the age a child may be left home alone. Factors should be taken into account, such as the maturity and emotional level of the child, and any medical or psychological issues or disabilities have to be considered. Nowhere does it say it's illegal to leave your children home alone. I'm sure parents are wise enough to know if their child is capable to be left home alone for a few hours. Somehow, the board is concerned about children being left home alone, but it doesn't seem like they're concerned walking four miles on a high-traffic main street like Warner. We have the funds. I feel like the parents have spoken on what they would like to do with those funds. These are our children. This is our schools. This is our district. So if you have to dig into the once-time COVID relief to get our children transportation, then do so. We will still be in a pandemic after all. Thank you for your time. This next comment is from Denise Kavanaugh. Dear Superintendent Carol Hanson and Board of Trustees, I am writing you today in support of returning busing to all students in the district at a fair and reasonable fee. As a former parent supporting the district and working parent, I appreciated the bus service that safely got my child to school. What I don't appreciate is the mismanagement of the school budget by this board and the leadership that got us at this point of declining our kids and families the ability to transport our children to school. Every year, the district has been warned of their deficit spending, yet under this board's leadership, they continue to spend and spend. Only 2% of the general funds go to children, while the rest goes to salaries and wasteful spending. Why should our children be punished for the decisions made by the adults who are responsible for this crisis? I ask that you do whatever it takes to bring back the buses. I also ask that you censure Trustee Tarvin for her years of harassment and abusive parents and community members on social media. She is clearly in violation of board conduct in social media. Since she seems to be the only one sometimes at 4:00 a.m. on social media arguing with members of the community about relevant OVSD business, she must be representing the district. Her lies and comments have been reprehensible. If she's not representing the district, she's using it for her own personal political gain. Sincerely, Denise Kavanaugh. Next comment is from Monica Cuadrado. And she writes, dear members of the board, please bring the transportation back so we can get our children back to school safely. The OVSD said in a statement about nondiscrimination that they talked about providing a positive work environment. They also mentioned about equal access and opportunities for our students, but they are taking away these resources. There is no equal access to our students to ride the bus. We're struggling each day to walk or to find a ride that goes back to the school site. It's not safe to send our six-year-old by foot or bike riding and carrying a 20-pound backpack when the school site is more than two miles away. And now the weather and the daylight saving time are here. Please bring solid solutions to this issue that is getting bigger. The most affected about this problem are our kids. The next comment is from concerned parents. Marineview School buses. What the school board is doing is ridiculous. The amount of $250 is ridiculous, and you are jeopardizing the safety of the children. Next comment is from an Elizabeth Bowdish. Busing. It has been very difficult getting my daughter to and from school this year without busing transportation. I'm a single parent and work full-time. How are parents supposed to work and pick up their kids from school? The survey you recently sent out was a complete joke. You want me to pay 2,500 for my daughter to walk 1.5 miles to Harborview? I don't think so. How can most parents afford 2,500 a year? Just because we are not in Oakview area doesn't mean we aren't struggling financially, especially during the past 18 months. It is not equality if only some students are given busing while others are denied that service. It is the school board's job to find funding for this essential service to the students. I'm sure there are areas you can cut in order to make this happen. Asking parents who already pay taxes to fund this district to shell out 2,500 a year is highway robbery. You need to find a way to get our kids' transportation. The next comment is from Megan Sidham Nixon. I am glad they are, they are considering bringing back the buses. They are necessary. I understand that you want a bill for this program, which is totally understandable, as they have been billed out, and it is costly. There's absolutely no way the $250 to $400 a month is a reasonable request to be billed to parents for this program. They are paying nine, they were paying $99 for a year previously. The parents and kids that need this program are single parents, parents that could be working two or three jobs to support their families, disabled parents, or parents who don't have the time or money to drop off or pick up their kids. This amount of money that you are taking from those parents is an extreme amount of money. There has been, has to be a compromise. I propose $400 to $500 a year. That would break down to $40 to $50 per month and would not hit the budget, which does have the funds for busing. And it would not hit the parents as hardly financially. This is manageable and doable for your board. Please look into this program. The next comment is from a Jerry Buluson. About item O6. To the Board of Trustees on item O6 on mask mandates. Thanks for your continued service to our students and families. I urge you to please continue to keep the masks mandates in our schools. The Delta variant is much more contagious, and kids will be much more susceptible to getting infected in a school setting with no masks. Being a registered nurse and a former school nurse, I know that health and safety is always a priority in schools. The best protection for our children who still cannot get vaccinated is a simple mask covering. It's a small ask for something that can have a profound impact on our children and their future. Masks have helped to significantly curb the spread in our schools and our community. Let's truly let our children and families breathe by keeping it safe and keeping the masks on in our schools. I believe that you will continue to make the best choices for the health and safety of our children and families, as well as set an unwavering example of care and kindness for our community. Thanks for your consideration. The next comment is from Carrie Buluson. Item O6. To the Board of Trustees on item O6 on mask mandates. Thank you for your continued service. I urge you to please continue to keep the mask mandates in our schools. The Delta variant is much more contagious, and kids will be much more susceptible to getting infected in a school setting with no masks. Being a registered nurse and a school nurse, I know the health and safety is always a priority in our schools. The best protection for our children who still cannot get vaccinated is a simple mask covering. It is a small ask for something that can have a profound impact on our children and their future. The masks have been working and have significantly helped to curb the spread of COVID in our schools and community. We can truly continue to let our students and communities breathe by keeping it safe and keeping the mask in our schools. I believe that you will continue to make the best choice for the health and safety of our children and families. Thank you for your consideration. Madam President, I just want to make a point of information clarification. There were two comments that were actually identical. I think it was submitted twice, just with a different name. I think it's just an accident. But the last two that were read were actually the same comment, in fact. So the next comment is from an unnamed commenter. It's about O6. It says, please disregard this proposed resolution, and please continue to follow and support California's public health guidance on the coronavirus in our schools. Masks are what enable us to come together as a community without putting others' health and well-being at risk. If only some people wear masks, the broader public health benefit is eroded, and the risk to our health is greater for all. And so is the risk of disruption to our students' education with repeated cycles of illness and quarantines. Masks are a small sacrifice to make inside our classrooms so our children can learn and receive a full education, including music, physical education, and art. We have seen the virulence of this virus up close, and feel masking is the least we can do so others don't have to. The next comment is from Crystal M. Agenda, item O6. Despite evidence the masks work and have allowed us to keep schools open, we are still having this debate with a board resolution not crafted by a concerned parent of the district, but rather downloaded from a website. As we know, the board does not have the discretion to implement mass choice. Masking requirements are mandated by the state. Thank you for following these protocols and continuing to keep our kids safe and schools open. Next comment is from Nina Pavola. Regarding Agenda Item O6. Dear Board of Trustees, thank you and all administrators, teachers, and staff for a terrific start of the new school year. My children are excited and happy to go to school every day to be with their peers and learn from their teachers in person. They feel safe. Our state and county COVID-19 data show that vaccines are working, and so are mask mandates. I urge you to continue to keep mask mandates in place in our schools. Thank you. Nina Pavola. Next comment is from Jeffrey Barky. Children are a very low, are a very low risk of COVID-19. The CDC-owned data shows that subs- subs- survivally, oh, I can't say it, survivability of COVID-19, if you are 18 or under, to be 99.997%. Why would we mandate an investigational vaccine in our children against an illness that are, they are not at risk? They are not at risk using brand-new mRNA technology that has never been used in a vaccination and without any long-term safety studies. In addition, numerous studies and expects agree that masking children offer little, if any, protection against COVID-19. And masking directly harms our children, causing increased anxiety, depression, suicidal ideation, and learning disorders. Almost all teachers are vaccinated, so the risk of threat from children to adults is negligible. Parents know best about their children. Mandates are, are anti, whoa, can, can you help me? Yes. Anti, anti-ethical. Thank you. To America and are not based on science. English is my second language. That was the tough one. It's, it's mine, too. It's, it's, I understand. Our Latin languages get in the way, don't they? Yeah, I'm like, woo. Okay, we're now at the next commenter. That's That's Mari Barky. Oh six, keeping children safe should always be our number one priority. I think parents are in the best position to make decisions for their children when it comes to safety, which includes masking.
Okay. Next comment is from Michael Johnson. To whom it may concern, at the beginning of the school year, parents were expecting for students at school to be checked for temperature. This, this far to my knowledge, that hasn't taken place. This hasn't taken place. Anyone with 101 temperature or greater would be sent home and needing to take a COVID test before returning. I, as well as other parents, have experienced some bug going around and the children at school have brought the sickness home. Our home has all been coughing, sneezing with a sore throat. We are taking medicine and no temperature, so it's probably just the common cold this time. Just wanting to know if temperature checks are going to start every morning prior to entry so that we are catching it before it enters the classrooms as we are heading into the fall and winter. My family in Northern California has begun taking precautions at school and are learning, are learning parents of COVID spread in the schools now, are, I think, alerting parents of COVID spread in the schools now. Thank you. We have weakened immune systems at our home and it would devastate our family if we catch COVID. And so I'm using this platform to keep precautions in place as planned. We're all in this together. Thank you, Michael.
Next comment is from an Ev. COVID precautions, thank you for giving parents the option of having students Plexiglas shield back out on their desk. My only other concern is why are we sitting kids six to a table in lieu of giving kids their own desks like some other schools provide? My son was in a classroom with 28 students and just got reduced down to 18 for the same reason. Is there anything we can do to make all our schools in our district have these individualized desks?
The next comment is from Brent Nichols. As the parent of a fifth and sixth grader, I want to show support for the health and safety policies. I want to continue to see steady leadership that does not bend to the loud and angry vocal minority that who have resisted these measures. We strongly support the continued focus on safety. Thank you for your leadership.
We're next going to hear a public comment from a Christian Adele. I want the board to know that not all of the classified employees supported the CSEA decision to reject the agreement made to increase our salary. Many, many of us did not agree with Fee Tran when he tried to coerce us into voting no on the ratification vote. He bullied a lot of employees into changing their decisions. And those employees now regret listening to his rampage and derogatory remarks about the board and the district. I hope the agreement can be settled and we can move on with our work and get the raise that was agreed upon. Thank you.
The next comment is from Mr. Richardson. Last week at Marineview, an older, older silver SUV drove over the Grand Bridge all the way to Warner on the shoulder of the road. Full throttle as fast as it could go, inches away from lots of children walking and riding their bikes. The illegal parking, the speeding, the general lack of concern for children being picked up safely is out of control. If we need buses to help, it needs to happen now. If we need constant reminders to parents via phone, text messages, emails, or school personnel to help direct traffic like Mesa View does, or police, it needs to happen now. One child life, one child's life isn't worth disregarding these issues. I'm sick of the thought of what could happen. We all have to do something to keep the kids safe. The children are expecting us parents to look out for them. They think the drivers are paying attention to them. Buses are safer than the bikes and even walking. And stressed-out parents don't always do the right thing or pay attention. Let's slow down and be safe. That concludes our comments. Okay, and we will now go to K Communications. K1, written communications to the board. I believe you all have your written communications in front of you. K2, board committee reports. I don't believe we have any. K3, trustees communications. We will start with trustee Briscoe.
I have a few things I would like to draw the attention of the board to. One, state law requires an anti-bullying plan for each school site, and it must be published and approved by this school site council and included along with the single-site plan for student achievement. My question is, and I'll look for an answer from the superintendent at a later time, is that what the PBIS is? Is the PBIS the anti-bullying program that's required by statute? And then two, are we teaching a patriotic song every month at every school site? Is another question I'd like to have answered by the superintendent. If we have time for PBIS, I think we have time to instill and teach patriotism. It's required a patriotic activity every single day by state law. I'd like to draw the attention of the audience to the two kinds of funding that exist in California. One's called basic aid and one is called average daily attendance. School districts that are very wealthy like the Irvine Unified School District, Newport Mesa Unified School District, Laguna Beach, Beverly Hills, and, and many others. They get paid based on the property taxes and their revenue is voluminous and generous and wonderful. And it's not how Ocean View is paid. We're paid by student attendance. So districts that have ADA funding cannot reasonably be compared to districts like Irvine that have basic aid funding where they can spend money on whatever programs they want, far more money per student than the Ocean View School District has. The third thing is that the model proposed, in my understanding, was to keep a child in Kids Club, a wonderful program with trained, certificated instructional staff that is certificated in after-school childcare. And, or a pickup and, or a bus ride, which then ends up being a home alone latchkey kid, which leaves them unsupervised. I would like to say that I'm okay with with charging a price that pays for the bussing itself, and that's about $250 a month. And I will stay here at the, stay here at the dais. I would agree, we should reinstate bussing at $250 a month to pay for itself. There is no state funding for bussing. We're not an ADA, we're not a basic aid district. We are an ADA district who has much lower funds. Our programs have to pay for themselves and we can't afford the encroachment that $90, that $90 a month provided and took away from instructional staff, teaching resources in the classroom. And that's my prime concern is teaching resources in the classroom. That concludes my comments.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Madam President. First, I want to say congratulations to the OVSD schools, College View, Hope View, Lake View, Star View, Golden View, Marine View, on their PBIS awards. Was very impressed hearing the two student speakers from Marineview from the ASB class. And secondly, I would like to address the gross misrepresentation of my character and what I have written online. First and foremost, I get tagged on social media where someone types my name, asks me a question. Typically, they demand answers. That's not an exaggeration. I receive, I have to say quite a bit of interaction from constituents. I think they realize that I am one of the only trustees that answers online when they, when they ask for response. I do that as a courtesy to the public. I in no way, shape, or form attacked anybody. And the public speaker that was here earlier was not giving accurate information. In fact, what I saw was an email to all of the Board of Trustees in response to what trustee Briscoe had written. And as part of that response, the public speaker that was here earlier said, I wonder what would cost the district more, bussing for the children or school board recall election? And no, I would not feel guilty taking money from the district to pay for a recall. Okay, so later, I made a statement that I was in opposition to any kind of recall election of the Board of Trustees. And I asked that anyone that was approached with this request to sign for recall, that they reject that. And it is my right, my constitutional first amendment right to be able to say that. Here's the thing, we all have responsibility as citizens or residents of this nation to make sure that when we put out information, whether we be a school board member or a community member who's the lead on a petition against the school board's supposed decision, which hasn't even been made yet, we have a responsibility to not throw around issues like recall, which would cost the district upwards of a million dollars. Now, after that was stated, I had an exchange online with this individual and explained that we should all be polite to each other, and that's what I intended to do. And I repeated that multiple times, and this is what I was met with. So if I turn up missing or dead, you know where to start looking for. She, Gina, is shameful and a poor excuse for a public official with a long history of spreading misinformation and intimidation. Hashtag OVSD mafia. How inappropriate is that? That's what I was on the receiving end of. But it's okay, I can take it. I'm a public official, but I won't agree that that's accurate. Thank you. Thank you, Vice President.
Thank you. I don't have a lot of comments tonight other than to say, I've said it before. I'll say it again. Delete your social media. It's the devil's playground. It's caused enough problems in this, in our society already. I think it's just a nightmare situation that we've gotten ourselves into as a society, and we all need to man up and pull ourselves away from it. We can communicate better in better forums. Other than that, I do want to congratulate the PBIS winners. I think that's a great program. I'm glad that they're taking proactive steps to bring some positive behavioral interventions into our schools, reducing suspension and some of the other disciplinary measures that were not working in the past. I'm grateful that we have these programs in place. I'm grateful that our schools are winning awards, and I'd like to see them continue into the future. Good job, schools, and thank you for the presentations and thank you for the speakers who've been here tonight. That's it.
Thank you, trustee Westwell.
Thank you, Madam. Thank you, Madam President. I just have a one brief comment. I'm very concerned about one of our board members behaving on social media and coming across as a spokesman for the district. Our board policies require that a board member on social media identify themselves as having a personal comment or a comment that is reflective of the board. Madam President, that's not happening. So the people in the public perceive this conversation to be representative of the board. And that doesn't always paint this board in a positive light. I know it makes me look bad and I don't appreciate it. We have policies in place that are not being enforced. It's the will of the board not to enforce these policies. So I'm bringing them to your attention again. Our, our, our specific policy on social media as well, as well as board policy, I believe it's BP 1100. Board members might want to refresh themselves on that policy so that it isn't abused. Those are my comments. Madam President?
Thank you. I too want to congratulate College View, Hope View, Lake View, Star View, Golden View, and Marine View on their PBIS awards. It is great to see our schools doing great work and coming together as a community as we return back into the schools and receiving these great awards. It's a testament of the hard work of the staff and, and the students. So thank you for that. Congratulations. I just want to, you know, say that what I have previewed, what I've been previewed to on social media has been, in fact, accurate. You know, it is difficult when somebody is being tagged to provide a response. They, they're being compelled to provide a response. And so I do think it's unfair when parents seek a response and they tag an individual. They're expected to respond because what ends up happening when they don't respond, it becomes like you're ignoring us, you don't care. And so it is, it is a difficult thing to say. I do have to say that when this whole transportation thing was discussed at social media as the board president, I did go into those threads and I did say, we will be having a board meeting. This agenda item will be discussed at that board meeting. And I will not discuss it further. And I stopped any, any further conversation online because I wanted to make sure the public understood. We are going to have a meeting. No decisions have been made. This board is going to deliberate together tonight and then we're going to make an official decision. But I do think that, you know, this board does have first amendment rights. As individuals, they have the right to go and share their opinion something. And if somebody is being tagged and asked for their opinion or asked for questions, they have the right to respond. On all the comments I saw, nobody made an official statement from the district. It was answering a question and moving along. The position was just made cleared by myself that there would be a meeting to come to the meeting and hear the conversations and deliberate. So I think we communicated that clearly. And it's unfortunate that sometimes community members can take us answering questions as a misconstruction of what happened. Again, based on what I saw, that did not happen at all during those online conversations. And with that, I will move on. Okay, we will now go to K4 Superintendent's Communication.
Good evening. Good evening, board. I just want to say a big thank you to all of our parents out there who have attended our back-to-school nights. Our elementary back-to-school nights have concluded and our, we have a few more middle schools that are upcoming. It's great to see our parents in person and to once again have opportunities for parents to meet their child's teacher face-to-face and learn about all of the wonderful activities in their classroom and at the, the school. Our PTOs and PTAs are also seeking memberships this month. And I urge parents to get involved, whether through a PTA, a PTO, or just simply connecting regularly with your student's teacher and also your school principal. I'm happy to report that I have been on all of our school campuses, more than once, and in almost every single classroom since school opened. And it was so exciting to see our PBIS awards tonight. Because while I'm visiting campuses during that, those opening weeks of school, we see that many of our classrooms and our campuses are devoting attention to setting standards and expectations for behavior for our students. And I saw many of those activities that they spoke about tonight. It's very exciting. I know that our teachers and our principals are doing their best to bring back as much normalcy, normalcy to our campuses despite the COVID protocols. So I do want to let families know that if they have questions regarding our COVID protocols, that they, they do reach out to the school or they can visit our website and look at the decision tree and more information about such things as the modified quarantine. I know that it can be confusing, but we're doing our best to abide by the California standards and to keep parents informed. I want to give a big shout out to our teachers and students as I am quite impressed with the focus on academic vocabulary and writing and small group instruction. And the general focus that I see out there is learning acceleration. During my visits, I'm seeing our students also being involved in taking their eye-ready assessments for English Language Arts and Mathematics. And these assessment results will help teachers plan lessons for the coming months to ensure our students are on track to make academic progress. And we will be bringing updates to the board about those eye-ready results and progress. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and with that, K5, do we have a PTA, PTO, PTSA, PTSO President's Roundtable Representative with us tonight? I don't think so. Is that correct? Okay, we will go to K6, Employee Associations Communications, CSEA and OVTA. I believe I saw CSEA.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Mr. Bozarth.
Thank you. My name is Jason Bozarth and I'm the chapter president of CSEA 375. I will try to make this short. This evening in public comments, I recently heard a disgusting line and a dishonest slander of someone who has been a champion for the classified staff for much of his career. They have worked above and beyond to see them lifted up and empowered. The chapter officer in question was recently honored at our state conference with the Lawrence Two Acts Unity Award for his work in bringing people together. It's a rather prestigious award. And to hear someone accuse him of bullying and coercion is insulting for our chapter. Patently outrageous and profoundly untrue. I have worked with Fee Tran and I consider him to be a friend. And the classified staff will never find a better advocate for their interest in the betterment of their lives. Now, the name which was given was not someone on our roster as a member of our association and did not attend the meetings at which the tentative agreement was discussed. So they are either lying or hiding their identity. or hiding their identity in order to make a blind attack on a good man's name and reputation. We have always kept an open-door atmosphere, and no one, including myself, is above honest criticism. But this is a scurrilous attack and an attempt to denigrate the integrity and character of someone who has been a tireless advocate of the classified staff since they first took up the mantle. I am profoundly disappointed that someone would use the public comments forum, something that is being provided for the community, to attack and slander one of our officers. I ask the Board of Trustees and the administration to disregard this baseless accusation, and I invite anyone who has an honest criticism to come speak with us because our association belongs to our members, and it is here for them. Thank you very much. Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Bozarth. OBTA? Do we not? Okay, we don't have a representative from OBTA. When that will go to L. Reports, L1 Transportation Update. Dr. Hanson.
Thank you. I'm just going to share my screen. One moment.
Sorry about that. Okay, so we have our transportation update. So just to give you some background, over the past few years, Ocean View has had to make some difficult decisions to reduce unfunded liabilities and how we deal with non-required programs that have caused a negative fiscal impact. Transportation encroachment, which is a result of those unfunded liabilities, has been 1.8 to 2.2 million annually in OBSD. Some so you know that school districts are not required to provide transportation except for some specialized programs, such as special ed. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, Ocean View did make a decision to suspend fee-based transportation for the 2021 school year. Some of the other factors that led to our suspension of transportation was the lack of available bus drivers in Orange County, and to be quite frank, all over the nation. And because of that, we've had to rely on outside transportation services that have caused an increased burden on our budget. As I mentioned, there is a nationwide shortage of school bus drivers. Also, it's important to note that transportation was provided for Marine View students to the interim site in the 2021 school year using Measure R bond funds, and transportation continues for Vista View students who go to the interim site because that was the direction of the board. And that is funded out of our bond projects. After the issues were raised regarding our suspension of fee-based transportation, we did a survey. And seven of the 13 nearby districts in Orange and Los Angeles County surveyed do not provide fee-based transportation. Matter of fact, four of the five neighboring districts right here in the Huntington Beach area do not provide fee-based transportation. So about the survey, we did send a survey to Marine View families. We got 209 out of the 451 responded. 28 people said they would participate in busing for the $250 per month, and 26 people said they would participate in Kids Club for $335 per month. So this is just background information and update about where we stand. I wanted to just tell you how we came up with that amount. In order to add busing in Ocean View right now, we would have to contract with an outside service, and that costs approximately $113,000 for one bus with 84 students on that bus. So the problem with that, with the issue with transportation is there is a lack of drivers out there in the in our communities. We are actively recruiting because if we were to add an additional bus route, we would prefer to hire our own staff member, which costs about $55,000. But keep in mind, that's just the cost of the salary. That's not the cost of maintenance of the bus or the gas or all of the overhead that goes with it, mechanics and so forth. So the concern about additional transportation costs, adding additional routes, is increased unfunded liability, as you've heard, that nationwide bus driver shortage, and the limited availability of contracted services. We have investigated the possibility of adding additional routes. We have been in contact with numerous outside agencies, and no one has drivers available at the moment. Everyone is stretched thin because of this nationwide bus driver shortage. We also are concerned that we would have limited interest to fill buses to capacity, which would be a cost impact. So just show you, I had mentioned this encroachment, and you'll see that in 2018, 19, we did have 25 routes, and the board gave some direction to reduce those routes down. We currently have 15 routes, but we only have 12 of our own drivers because we have lost drivers to retirement and to resignations. So we do have to continue to hire outside vendors to drive, and that's currently happening, and we have to fund mechanics, and we have some full-time drivers with health and welfare benefits. So we did cut the encroachment a bit, as you can see there. If we were to add an additional route, again, it would be pending if we would be able to actually secure a driver. So that is a concern at this time. So so just to kind of look at what are some options? After looking at the survey results, after surveying neighboring districts, after looking at the history of what Ocean View has considered in the past, we came up with three, I came up with, along with President Singer, with three options for the board to consider. We're looking at an annual bus fee of anywhere from $1,000 to $600. Keep in mind that the, back in February of 2020, the board had come to consensus that if we were to continue transportation, the suggested charge was approximately $90 a month, not $90 a year, which was our previous fee. So just have that piece of information. And so you can see that even if we charge this lower annual fee of $600, $800, or $1,000 a year, the district would still have to subsidize this cost because we did some figures there of what, how much subsidy we'd have to cover with only 45 students, which is less than, is a little over half of the bus or the 28 students of the people that actually filled out the survey. So you can see there's a significant subsidy that the district would have to incur. So you know, we would offer a reduced rate, 25% reduced rate for our low-income families. That's my recommendation. If you choose one of these options, and we move forward with that, I'll explain the next steps. As you saw, there was less interest in Kids Club, and at the nine months at $335 a month, the district would still have to subsidize this program. The program about breaks even with about 32 students, and that's if all students are paying the full fee because sometimes we have reduced rates for two children, for example. So that's kind of a break even. Again, there is issues with Kids Club, too. We do have staffing shortages. We have a waiting list at two of our schools, I believe, right now for Kids Club because we can't fully staff it to open more seats in Kids Club because there is a staffing shortage out there of childcare workers. This is clearly in the news that both bus drivers and childcare workers are in demand. So our issue is that, again, this would increase, there'd be an increased unfunded liability, and we could have, we do have staffing shortages, so this is not something we could do soon, but if the board directed us, we could look at doing it in the future. So what are my recommendations and next steps? I think that there is interest for fee-based transportation in certain areas within our district. I think that we should offer it where there is high interest. I think that the fee structures that I recommended is reasonable and that the board would need to give direction on that. I think that we need to communicate to our families that the fee-based transportation in high interest areas will be offered this school year, and transportation needs will be reviewed annually because if we're going to continue to offer it at what the community considers an affordable rate, it's going to have to be subsidized. And the district has to make choices about how they spend their money because there is no money, special money set aside for transportation. So tonight, I seek board direction on the fees, if you want to have fee-based transportation, and I'll continue to monitor interest in Kids Club.
Okay, before we get moving on on this, I'm going to go ahead and ask for a motion on this item so that we can then start having our conversations on it, so.
I move to approve.
Sorry, I'm going to state it.
Madam President, point of information. I think what would be best at this time is actually not to ask for any kind of motion.
I apologize. Yes, I apologize. I should have just asked for consensus on this. I apologize. This was not an action item, so I misspoke. Let me take that back, and I'm going to go ahead and pull the board on this matter. If we can go back to the slide, oh, there it is. It's in front of us. Okay, so right now we're seeking direction on potentially subsidizing transportation specifically to the Marine View area. And so the recommended options are either $1,000 annually, $800 annually, or $600 annually. If you see, based on 45 students, the subsidy is in red. If it's based on 28 students, the subsidy is in red as well. And this is assuming that because of the bus shortage we have and the staff, this is us going out and finding a vendor to provide transportation when and as soon as possible. Okay, so we don't know when this would be available immediately because we're having a really hard time finding bus drivers to be able to offer this. So it's a possibility that it could happen in a month, it could happen sooner, we don't know. But if we want to go down this path, this is things to consider. So I'm going to go ahead and go around and ask for some consensus on this. Trustee Briscoe?
Madam President, I'm curious, what percent of students took the school district bus when we provided for free from the Marine View community?
Let me, Dr. Hanson, do we have those figures, an approximate?
Approximately 100, less than 100.
Out of how many students are enrolled in that site, Madam President?
That's just that area, so.
That route?
So how many students does Marina and Marine View enroll?
Around 650.
So around 650 students, we had 100 that wanted to use the free bus, and the rest arrived thereby.
I'm sorry, can I just want to be clear, in previous years?
I'm talking about the bus from Marine View to the interim site.
Oh, no. You asked two different questions. Let's clarify, from Marine View to the interim site, what people, we did have, I believe, 180 students participate.
So you had 180 out of 650?
Yes, based on those numbers, yes.
And how many students are taking advantage of our free bus at Mesa View? From Mesa View to the interim site?
Are you referring to Vista View?
I'm sorry, Vista View, yes.
Okay, we're not discussing Vista View, though.
We're discussing bus utilization when it's free, and everybody could be on it, and I'm interested in the number, so.
Do we have those figures about?
I don't have Vista View. What I can tell you is that it takes us two to three buses to transport the students, and they are sitting oftentimes three across.
Okay.
Three across is the statutory.
A full bus.
Okay, so we might take 84 times three, Madam President? Is that what I hear?
Not necessarily two buses at 84, I hear.
So that would be 180, the same as Marine View, give or take. Okay. So no, $1,000 a month is kind of less than we charge now at $90 a month, I believe. Would that be correct, Madam President?
No, that is incorrect. It was.
$1,000 a year is $90 a month.
Previously, it was $90 a year.
$90 a year?
Yes, that was our previous suggested $90 a year.
I thought we were 90 a month the most recent year until we stopped paying for it altogether.
No, it was not. It was $90 a year, the suggested, yes.
Okay, well, I'm all in favor of busing. I've always said that kids love to ride the bus, they have a lot of fun, and they got a lot of homework done, maybe. On the busing we did for the asbestos program, we're getting whatever, we're getting some participation and interest at Marine View and about the same at Vista View.
So based on these options, which would you support?
$1,000. The the cost is $250 per month per student, so no, I it should be eventually soon self-funding, but $1,000 if that's what administration thinks we should do.
Okay, I will move on to Madam Clerk. Go ahead.
Well, thank you, Madam President, for recognizing me. I have some questions and some comments. May I address Dr. Hanson directly?
Yep, go ahead.
Dr. Hanson, a couple of questions for you. I saw in the presentation that you had mentioned that four of the five neighboring school districts do not provide fee-based transportation. So what I want to do is just ask you or clarify. I know that Huntington Beach Union High School District does not provide busing because my older child goes there, and I know that he walks to school, it's about two miles. But he's older, he's 16. There is a difference. Okay. Westminster School District, they don't either. Is that accurate? Fountain Valley School District, they do not provide home-to-school busing either. Is that accurate? Okay, and so now if OVSD were to make the decision not to provide busing, we would be one of those four of the five, okay? And so the one district that is providing some home-to-school busing is who, and how much are they charging?
It's Huntington Beach City School District, and I believe it's about $250 a semester, about $500 between $450 and $500 a year.
Okay, so roughly $500 a year. Okay. So we have a figure here that's 600, it's just a little bit more. We don't know what their situation is over there and why they're funding the way they are, although I knew there is some talk about their finances right now. Apparently, they're having financial trouble with a couple of things. I don't know if busing is one of them, but I do see here that if we subsidize I do see here that if we subsidize at a thousand dollars, it would be sixty-eight thousand dollars that would come from the district to subsidize. At eight hundred, it would be seventy-seven thousand dollars out of the district general fund. And at six hundred dollars, it would be eighty-six thousand dollars of a subsidy. And if it were only twenty-eight kids, we're looking at higher subsidies. Okay, I understand that's not optimal. But I also understand that we have subsidized for Kids Club for at least this year. And, and we did that because we knew that we had to serve the community. And we wanted to build back up the program that had been decimated by the pandemic, just like busing was decimated by the pandemic. We made a decision in February of twenty twenty. Is that correct, Dr. Hanson? To do what?
To re, to condense routes. So we'd have less drivers. So we wouldn't have to hire out with a certified, which costs the hundred and thirteen thousand dollars per route. And that we would have our students pay a ninety dollars a month. That was the recommendation of the board in February of twenty twenty. But then with the pandemic, we brought back information about the, the social distancing and so forth. And the board made the direction to suspend it at that time.
Okay, so in February, late February twenty twenty, we made a recommendation to condense the routes and to move forward to have this new fee. But to still provides home-to-school busing. And then the pandemic hit.
Correct.
Okay, and the pandemic hit and we closed schools on March thirteenth of twenty twenty. Only about four weeks after we had made that other decision, three and a half to four weeks, yes?
Correct.
Okay, so we had to stop busing because there literally were no children at school. And then when we came back, there was a special board meeting that we held to make sure that the kids from Marine View got to the interim site. And the board majority, not everybody on the board, but the board majority voted to provide transportation from Marine View to the interim site. Yes?
Correct.
Okay, and at that time, we were then told that we had to separate the kids by three to six feet distancing. Is that accurate?
Correct.
And so we decided at that time not to reinstate home-to-school busing. Cause literally there, it would have taken what, a hundred buses or how many buses?
I, I don't know the exact number, but it was almost double what we had. And we knew that we could not secu- not only the cost, but we could not secure drivers to, to, to sustain that.
Okay, all right, so I'm going to cut to the chase here. I think that because of the fact that we've afforded the parents of Kids Club a subsidy, that I would like to also afford parents that are interested in this busing from the Harborview area to Marine View. Because it is such a, a distance. To be able to afford them the maximum subsidy. So that the cost can get down to six hundred per year and be concomitant with, or similar to what the Huntington Beach City School District is offering. And we would be then the only two school districts in Huntington Beach offering busing. You know, listen, trustees, we get into this situation or this job because we want to serve the community. We're not paid, we're volunteers. I hear Trustee Briscoe say that a lot. And he's actually, it's true, but that doesn't make our job any less important. I think it is critical that we look out for all of our constituents. And I know that folks are still hurting from the pandemic. I also know that this board has always worked above and beyond to make sure that we do things differently than the other school districts. And that we don't just go, well, you know, everybody else, like ninety percent of the school districts are not doing anything. They're not offering busing, so we shouldn't either. But at the same time, you're saying that each route is over a hundred thousand dollars. Is that correct?
Correct.
And that's an unfunded liability.
Correct.
So we don't get any money from the state or federal government to fund that?
Not specialized funds. It comes out of our general fund of how we choose to spend all of our money.
Okay, and I recall hearing from Dr. Conroy and then again from from other staff, I think, was it last meeting? We heard that actually it's two point two million dollars. Is that accurate? The, the encroachment or the unfunded liability that we're having last?
Well, that, last year.
That is from, from, that was last year.
Current projected this year is, is close to one point nine.
Okay, so between one point nine million and two point two million dollars. I think Mr. Pharaoh presented that.
Correct.
Okay. That's a lot of unfunded liability. It's very concerning.
That is the slide that shows the encroachment.
Dr. Hanson, do you feel, though, that with any of the COVID relief funds that we've gotten this year, that we could use eighty-six thousand dollars? Or would it have to come out of the general fund as well to be able to subsidize this?
We, we could subsidize this with our COVID funds, but keep in mind that this only lasts so long.
So when do the COVID funds send sunset, meaning they end?
Well, with certain funds, we have to the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Twenty-three, twenty-four, okay.
The next two school years, we have to, to expend the funds. So we've gotten some of them, funds, we'll get a few more in the coming months. But then we have till the end of the twenty twenty-four school year, twenty-three, twenty-four school year, June of twenty-four, to e- expend those funds.
So do you think it would be best to look at this on a yearly basis then?
Absolutely, because we're going to kind of hit what we call a cliff in, in, in twenty twenty-three, which is for twenty twenty-four. We're going to have to make some tough decisions.
Okay, one of the last things I want to say before I turn the meeting back over to you, Madam President, is that I heard quite a few commenters at the podium tonight making comments about the Oakview students. And that they felt like they were getting special treatment and that other students were not. And I just want to address why that seems to be the case. The thing is, is that Oakview students are different from many of the students in our school district demographically. In the sense that many of them are considered impoverished, Title I students receiving, recently receiving free and reduced lunch until Governor Newsom made all lunches for free in California. I wish that he would make all busing free for students in California. And maybe that's one of the things that I will bring up with him. I do know him and have access to speak to him and talk to him about the fact that, you know, in rural areas, kids get to be bused, but in these suburban areas, some kids do need to be bused. And, but what I want to say is that the Oakview students themselves are in a special circumstance. Because there's special funding that comes along with students that are considered high-need students with formula funding from the state of California and Title I funding that comes from the federal government, as well as McKinney-Vento funds for students that are experiencing homelessness, which many of the students in Oakview are. With students living in doubled and tripled-up conditions. And that being one of the definitions of homelessness according to the federal government. So I do hear concern from parents, but I do want them to really understand that the Oakview students are in a different situation. Also, we do provide busing per the Measure R funding for the kids that attend the interim school site at Sun View while their school is being worked on. I say this because what I have been seeing out in the public on social media, I saw some actual, like a small TV production. I saw something, even got a, a question from a newspaper reporter about the fact that, in fact, Ocean View had just decimated and canceled all busing. That's completely not true. It's unfactual. So again, busing is provided for students that are going to the interim site by Measure R funding. Students from Oakview, middle school students only, are going to the four different middle schools based upon something that was a decision made years ago by another board and paid for with specific funding. And also special education students who are mandated, who are receiving busing services due to federal law and idea law per their IEPs. So, Madam President, I'd like to go with six hundred dollars and have the district subsidize at maximum capacity. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice President.
I have a question for the superintendent, based on the slides, I believe on page four, maybe three. Nope, sorry. Slide seven, yeah. So where do we get the numbers, Superintendent, forty-five and twenty-eight?
Typically, we, okay, the size of a bus is eighty-four students.
Yes.
And in our recent, when we had fee-based, that was probably a, a common number, a, a, a number of how many students we would get on a bus or how many people we would sign up for a route.
Either twenty-eight or forty-five.
No, no, sorry, forty-five. Twenty-eight is the number of people that completed, that said yes on the survey.
So based on the survey, we're assuming that only twenty-eight people would need to take a bus to Marine View from there, wherever they live?
Well, no, because the, the survey was for a higher amount. So we believe that we'd get more participants if we had a, and that's what we've heard from feedback from people. And we've heard them tonight, and I've received emails and other, I think you two have received emails that people felt that that fee was too high. And so that's why we have the, the lower rate.
It is high, and I agree with them. That's a lot of money for, especially for single moms or even parents to spend. So we can assume maybe forty-five students would be taking the route, roughly?
Roughly.
Okay, and then in terms of retaining bus drivers, why do you think there's a nationwide shortage of bus drivers? Is it people don't have interest in the job? Is it that the job doesn't pay well enough?
You know what, I, I, I can just have my own a, a opinion.
I can settle for that.
Yeah, is that, you know, a lot of people stop, we stopped providing a lot of these services such as transportation and childcare because schools were closed. And so people went and got other jobs.
Okay.
And so, so it's now, and, and, so now it's hard to find people to come back to these jobs.
And are our salaries here in Ocean View competitive with other?
Our, our salaries are a little bit lower than some of our neighbors. However, we have recently posted positions with full benefits. So we, the board made this decision before. When we were looking at reducing transportation, that one of the, the directions that the board made is even though we reduced some of our, our employees from eleven months to ten months, we made a commitment to offer full benefits to a, a higher percentage of employees.
And, and how many, how many drivers do we currently have employed? Cause we, cause you have twelve current, it says drivers, but then it says five drivers with H and W.
We have seventeen, all right, so we have seventeen. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, we have twelve drivers, so five of those have full benefits right now. Because the other ones are, are working less hours.
Okay.
And so, so we have twelve, but we would like to have more of, of our own drivers. So if you see on there, if you see on this slide that there's three from outside vendor and one sub-driver, we would like to be able to change those to our own employees.
No, and I totally understand that. I was just trying to do the math with regards to like trying to entice people with more money. But I didn't realize that we had seventeen or wait, twelve, seventeen drivers. And that becomes a little bit financially insolvent at that point in time. So. Go ahead.
Okay, twelve of our own drivers.
Right, and so if we do go, the board should know that if we do go six hundred dollars annual bus fee for forty-five students, assuming that we get forty-five students, that, I'm just doing the math. And that's, this is, you know, not counting the six hundred that the, the individuals provide us. We are looking at spending an extra one thousand nine hundred dollars, nine hundred eleven dollars per student for those forty-five students. To subsidize those forty-five students. So my question is equity. I, I mean, I know we always find the money some way or another. We seem to. Schools always complain about money. We always seem to find the money one way or another. But this is, you're spending one thousand nine hundred eleven dollars on forty-five students. If those truly are forty-five students, and that's if we get that money from forty, the full forty-five students. If we get twenty-eight, it's three thousand four hundred thirty-five dollars for twenty-eight students. How do we justify that in terms of not spending that money on any other child in the district? Can other parents come to the board and say, well, I'd like my one thousand nine hundred and eleven dollars? And, and we then have to spend that on them as well? I don't know. I'm not saying that this is an easy decision. I'm saying jump into it with eyes, eyes wide open, because that's basically what you're saying. And, I mean, I feel for the parents. I get it. This is tough. This is a tough decision to make. And like I said, I lean towards the six hundred dollars with the full subsidy, because we find the money one way or the other.
So that's your consensus, six hundred, or your?
Yeah, but I mean, going into it with eyes wide open, saying, you know what, this is not an equitable situation. And there's an issue there. If we're talking about equity. So, I mean, unless you can come up with another solution, but I mean, I don't see. I mean, I don't know, I'm interested in knowing how many kids are actually going to, how many parents are actually going to show up? Is it going to be ten? Is it going to be thirteen? How many people do we really have? I mean, twenty-eight responded to the survey and said they were interested. Interest is different from commitment.
And I think it's going to be difficult until we have a direction that we set. And then the district can put it out there and see really what interest and applications get submitted based on the direction of the board. I think you're right, it is, there's interest, but until we have that, set some direction on it, we really won't know.
And, and I think, you know, the parents that came to the podium, and I understand their anger and their concern, should understand that, that they're asking for us to supplement even more inequitably their child's education. And I feel for their safety. I do. I get it. And it's a long ways to walk, because they live by where I live, and that's a long ways. So I get that, but this is the district funding their child in, in an uneven way compared to other children in the district.
Okay.
So.
Thank you. Trustee Westwell.
Thank you. I just need some clarification on slide six. It says contracted busing is a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. I guess that's per bus driver. Is that correct?
Yes.
And we pay our staff, our bus drivers, fifty-five thousand a year, correct?
Correct.
So my basic economics says that if we offered more money, we'd have more bus drivers. Since we're paying contracted bus drivers a hundred and thirteen thousand, and our staff only fifty-five thousand. I think there's some marginal increase that could be done there, and we would achieve more bus drivers. That seems pretty simple.
Can I just clarify?
Yes.
I, I have many more questions here. You can clarify later. How many buses do we have?
Do you want answers now, or are you going to shoot up?
Know now.
Okay, well then let her clarify her first, your first statement. Go ahead and clarify.
We have forty-four buses.
Thank you.
There's all different sizes of buses.
Right. Forty-four buses. We're committed to busing with forty-four buses. We've been committed to busing for a long time. And now we're just cutting our community off at the knees. We have, we have different-sized buses. We could obviously do some different routing. We don't need to fill up eighty-four-seat buses, because we've got smaller ones. We've got a lot of flexibility. Madam President, are we still overstaffed with teachers?
No, we are not.
Cause the last report, we had ninety-five percent, we were at ninety-five percent staffing. Are we still there, ninety-five percent? We are. Okay, thank you.
But we are not overstaffed. Dr. Hanson, can you please clarify that?
We are not overstaffed as, as far as staff that we aren't using. We are using all of our staff.
Compared to other districts of similar size, I believe that we've, I've been told that we are overstaffed. So let me move on from there. Fee-based on page four. On slide four, got some questions. It says seven out of thirteen nearby districts surveyed do not provide fee-based transportation. Do any of those provide free or subsidizing, subsidized transportation?
No.
Okay, at the four of the five neighboring districts, do they provide free or subsidized?
No.
Okay. Do we have a busing policy currently?
Yes.
Very good. Where can I find that?
I'll, I'll find that for you.
Did Title One, Title One funds be used for Oakview busing?
Yes.
Terrific. Well, I thank you for this report. I want to caution this board, the superintendent and the president of running this board by consensus. I've warned about this before. We're playing to the public. We just get a quick consensus, and we're making these decisions, and they're emotional decisions. And we really should be voting on these things, not running the district by consensus. I don't think that's a very good way to do it. Or should have issues put before us where we take action and vote on them. This is another reason that's getting us into trouble here. I don't support the six hundred, any of these three. I think it's too much. We're taking it up too fast. Oh, here's another question. The prices you show on slide eight says reduced by twenty-five percent for low-income families. Why is that? Why do we reduce it for low-income families? We're looking for equality. Why are we doing that?
I believe the reason why we're doing that is because based on parents' feedback during this survey, many of the parents shared during their surveys that they were single parents, were barely making it, were low-income families. And so because of that, we need to consider the financial place of those families as well. So that is why that was as an option.
Well, I think we're discriminating against various members in our community.
Okay.
And I think it's becoming apparent here, and it's going to be more and more difficult. I understand we've got a voluntary desegregation program that was done on a board previous test long ago. That's why we did the desegregation that we're doing over at Oakview. I would suggest if we're not going to bus people around except for special ed and the statutory requirements, that we end the busing at Oakview. We either are going to bus all of our students and have equality for all of our students, or we shouldn't have any. That's what discrimination is. And so if we have a problem with perceived discrimination over at Oakview, perhaps we need to take some other action besides busing. We could, we could take some other actions. That may or may not even be a problem. We haven't communicated with the people at Oakview to find out if, do they really want to be segregated like that? Do they want to go to four different schools? We don't know. Maybe they do, maybe they don't. I don't know. I, my guess would be they don't. They all want to go to the same school. We haven't been sued. It was a threat, it's my understanding, it was a threat of a lawsuit that we did this voluntary desegregation, so we could voluntarily eliminate it. My, my concern is the discrimination against the rest of the district. We do here, we do there, we, we don't there. We've got this, in my opinion, a flimsy policy. I think we've taken it up too soon. I think there's money in the district if we find it. These problems have all been caused by the Democrats up in Sacramento, and we're having to deal with it down here. And so elections have consequences, and we all need to realize that. So when parents get mad, they get mad at us, but really the problem is up in Sacramento. I support a three hundred dollar subsidy and no more. I think asking the parents to do that is just, it's a big lift, especially all at once, and that's what we're doing. We're telling them to do this all at once. Who is a surprise to them? We've heard testimony from our parents that they were shocked to find out this was all going to happen one week before school started. I'm disappointed with that communication. I'm disappointed the way that we've handled this. And I don't support overcharging our parents. I think there's money in the district. We should find it and thank you.
I want to clarify, when you said three hundred dollar subsidy, what did, what did you mean by that? I just want to make sure I understood what you said.
Thousand dollar, eight hundred dollar, and six hundred dollar options on here. I think all of those are too much.
Okay, so you think we should charge families three hundred dollars a year? Is that what I'm hearing you say?
Yep.
Okay. Yes, Madam Clerk.
Well, I am so pleased to hear my colleague change his mind on subsidies. He was adamantly opposed to giving any subsidies for Kids Club. He said, why give to those families and not anybody else? I can hear him now. Also, in September, September second of twenty twenty, when we brought forward, and actually I was the president of the board at that time, and brought forward for a vote, the issue of paying for the busing for the Marineview kids to go to Sunview, he voted no. No. He was the only board member to do so. The other four of us, the rest of us, voted yes, to make sure that the kids got from Marineview to Sunview and back. So I'm literally delighted that he wants to actually help the community, because in the past, his track record is to do the total opposite, as recent as no subsidies for Kids Club and no, zero, nothing for the kids that were going to the interim site. Okay, so what I hear here is a bunch of politics. Sacramento, Democrats, okay, look, we're a local board. We make our own decisions, and we have to deal with what we have to deal with. But we also have to make sure that we're financial, financially sound, and that we're being responsible fiduciaries. And when we talk about, I also heard some statements about Oakview, and that now we're discriminating against the rest of the kids in the school district just because kids at Oakview get busing. Well, I completely disagree for these specific reasons. The Oakview students, for no fault of their, for no fault of their own, come with funding source from Title One funding, from Formula Funding, and from McKinney Vento Funding. If the other students were allotted those funds, it would change everything. Please stop targeting the Oakview community. It's not right. They are who they are. They're human beings. And no child in Oakview has ever said, can I be a Title One kid? No one's ever said, can I be homeless? I'd like to live three families piled up so that I can get free busing. Have we lost our humanity? We're talking about little kids. I'd like to make sure that every child have subsidized everything. But I'm hearing from our staff that we can't do that anymore. We're two point two million dollars in the hole every year. I see choices here from Dr. Hanson, and I was asked to give my opinion, and my opinion is six hundred based on what she says we can afford. Dr. Hanson, can we go any lower?
The COVID money is, is to focus on learning loss, learning acceleration, rather, and to, you know, correct issues that that occurred. So it's, it's making choices. Just like, do you want to spend more money on entertainment in your family budget? Or do you want to spend more money on, on your cost of your home or cost of your food? It's, it, these are choices that the board has to make. So yes, there is money there. I, I made these recommendations because they align with other similar fees that are, that are charged out there.
Okay. And I also heard Mr. Vice President make a really good point. I mean, he feels like I do, I guess. It's like, we, we want to make sure that the kids have what they need. We want to subsidize as much as we can. But then where's the equity in that? I get that. I get that. You're right, it's about choices. If we can go lower, great. If this is Dr. Hanson, if this is your recommendation, and you're an expert, and you say that this is what we can do, then I suppose we, we can go with that. The, the neck, the only other school district that offers the busing is HB City District, our next, our next-door neighbor, and theirs is at five hundred. Is that right?
Approximately. I have to go back and double-check either four fifty or five hundred.
Okay. All right. You know, just in closing, I want to say, you know what, we're all human beings. We should treat each other with kindness. I, I wish that we didn't have to target, hear the targeting of the Oakview community, not only from public speakers tonight, but from our own board. And remember, our past behavior and voting records. Voting records don't go away. They're on the record and they're in the minutes. So I applaud my colleague for wanting to change his ways and to actually subsidize the community. Thank you, trustee.
Okay, I, I'm going to speak, and then I'll come back to you, since I haven't had an opportunity to speak. I just want to say that I, I agree. For me, and you guys have heard me say this many times, equity is really important to me, and I believe in treating all of our students fair and giving them access and keeping them safe. So it, it does become a huge equity issue for me. Though I understand the concern of the safety and ensuring kids get to school safely, and we want to be able to do that. And I, as a mom, I understand the concern, but it is something that we have to be careful with, because, you know, here we are, we're going to offer this potential option, and I would not be surprised if other schools, parents and others start saying, well, what about us? Why are you not giving us busing? And then it comes before us, and we find ourselves going down this circle again. And so it does become a concern for me, especially when we're trying to cut costs wherever we can on things that are not mandated or required of us. But again, I understand the family need. I understand the safety issue, so I would not want to go any lower than six hundred. I, I really don't. And I think even that, when I calculated, I believe it was divided by ten, because it's ten months, I believe it came out to approximately, it's sixty dollars a month. I don't think that that's unreasonable. Sixty dollars a month to ensure your student gets to and from school a month. I, I feel as a, as a mom with two children, I think that I could afford that. I don't think that that's unreasonable. I also want to add that it is concerning, and it is hard to hear the way our Oakview kids constantly get disparaged. It is unfortunate that these families are a low-income family. Most of them are. And I don't think it's, it's by choice. They, they didn't make these decisions. And I know that I've heard before, prior to either me being involved with this board, that a board before most of you here decided to split the Oakview kids, a board here, prior to this, decided to split those kids and send them off to four middle schools. And I have said this before, I completely disagree with this. I think we should do something about it. We should change it immediately, because I don't think that's fair. We are singling them out ourselves by continuing to follow that policy and not allowing them to stay together as friends. I think most of them, if you ask them, they would rather go to one school versus be literally split into fours, into four different schools, different environments, different neighborhoods. It's not fair. And yes, we could address that. It's also a financial burden on us. So I, you know, I do want us to take that up. I think it is something that is long overdue, that should have been addressed many, many years ago. I think it's been going on for the last ten, twelve years, if I recall correctly from previous conversations. So I think it is time to change those things. But as far as the subsidy, I think six hundred dollars is, is where I, I stand. That's my opinion on it. Trustee Westwell, did you want to add something to it?
Yes, thank you.
Go ahead.
I keep hearing from this board, we need to make choices, choices.
Yes.
And we need to cut costs and make choices. Well, we've made choices on this board. We've chosen to give huge salary increases over and over to our employees. We've chosen to do that. That's our choice. And now the board says, woe is me, we have no money to pay for buses. Woe is me. Well, it's because the choices we made. We chose to take the money from one pot and put it in another pot for salaries. That's why we don't have money for the buses. That and COVID, and there's some other things. That's the reason. It's the choices this board has made. Oh, you know, the crocodile tears that I hear from staff and other board members saying, we just don't have the money. It's by our own doing. And I've also heard a comment up here about a board member, I'm assuming it's me, disparaging Oakview. That is not the case. I'm not disparaging anyone that did anything bad about the Oakview community. I am pointing out how we just keep piles and piles of money and resources on the Oakview community at the detriment of everyone else in the community. Who's being discriminated against here? Oakview gets more resources than anyone. That's not disparaging. It's the truth. And until we start speaking the truth to our community, we're doing our community a disservice. So you can characterize my comments as disparaging if you want. You're miscategorizing them. It tells me you're not listening to me. You don't hear what I say, and that's been typical of this board. So I think the money is there. I think we've put the money in the wrong piles, and now we don't have money to do the busing, which is what the community wants. So we're going to do whatever we're going to do, and it's probably not going to be what I want to do. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Briscoe, and then Madam Clerk.
Free, absolute free busing from Marineview over to the interim site, and only twenty-seven percent of the families decide to use it. So busing is very important to some families, but not to many at all. And the same number is true for this to view as well, apparently. So we offer absolute free busing. We would do well to fill up two buses, twenty-seven percent that will spend on families who claim they have a need. When you do busing, you automatically create latchkey kids, because there ain't no mom or dad back at home to take care of them whenever they arrive at home, compared to the Kids Club option, but that apparently wasn't wildly popular because of the cost. Plus, we have some constraints on the Kids Club to offer as well because of over-subscription in the recent period of time. So I still think a thousand dollars is reasonable, and we, it still has a huge subsidy. And that's my position. The one thing I do object to is the claim that Oakview gets more resources than any other schools. I believe that is incorrect. I don't know where that statement came from on this dais. But the Oakview school gets the same resources as everybody else. They have a loving, caring staff that teaches our children their English and the skills they need to survive in American society. In a school, it's ninety-nine percent Hispanic. In that same vein, the board made a decision about twenty or twenty-five years ago to take tiny little streets and alleys and allocate them to each of the middle schools so that we didn't end up with a giant clump of the ninety-nine percent Hispanic students all at one middle school. And as a part of that, the board decided to provide busing to get to the schools we decide they should go to. And that would be Marineview, for example, Way Way Far Way, or Mesa View. So I don't have a problem with that. We're not giving something extra special to Oakview that, that other students aren't getting, because we decided to enroll them in schools far away from where they live. And I think we should continue that service of busing. We also provide a late bus so that those students can participate in the after-school athletic programs that our district still offers, that other school districts have stopped offering. And one final question, Madam President, is Huntington Beach City School District an ADA district now? I mean, and a basic aid?
It is not.
It is not. They were going to be basic aid, and that has not happened?
Not yet.
Thank you. They have money there. That concludes my comments.
Okay, Madam Clerk, and then you're next. Go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Well, I do actually listen to all my colleagues, and so I'd like to say that, for one, we have not heaped huge raises on our employees. Actually, we're like the lowest-paid school district. We have the lowest-paid salaries in Orange County. I'm almost ashamed of it. I'm a teacher from another school district, and a lot of times I get accused of having a conflict of interest in giving the, the teachers and the employees all this money, and it's, it's just not, it's simply not true. We have the lowest-paid bus drivers in all of Orange County. That's why no one wants to work here. I actually heard the same colleague that made the point that supposedly I actually heard the same colleague that made the point that supposedly we're overpaying. And then he said five minutes before that, that we should pay more to the bus drivers. Which is it? Are we underpaying or are we overpaying? This is just, sounds like political theatrics to me to let the community that he thinks he's speaking to think that he's on their side. But he's voted against you numerous times. He voted against the Marine View community when they were supposed to go or when they did go to the interim site. He voted no. It was a four to one. He voted against you, Marine View families. He voted against all the kids' club families. He said, no subsidies for you. But now, because he feels like that constituency is attacking me, which you heard at the microphone tonight, which is fine. Okay, I understand people are upset. But I'm actually the one person that's always wanted to provide subsidies along with my three colleagues to the left of me. So in closing, I think we need to do what we can that's reasonable to make sure that families get their kids to school, bust if they so choose. And hopefully, we'll get a big number so that we can fill up the bus. That would be wonderful. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Trustee Westwell.
My last question is, I heard it mentioned that we are aware, board members are aware that there's two to three families living in the Oakview community in one dwelling, which violates occupancy laws. And so, Madam President, when we're aware of this, are we contacting Child Protective Services to protect these children from being abused in overcrowded situations?
I don't have the answer to that.
My guess is no. Thank you. No further questions.
Yes, trustee Briscoe.
There is no, Madam President, not a single enforceable code or law that regulates occupant loads in a unit. Maybe, possibly, there's a fire code if any cities ever went out to look at what units we're designed to, but no city has ever done that. So there is no I own rental property. So there's nothing anybody can do about body count in a unit. And that's just the way it is.
Madam President, we're no longer discussing transportation.
I know. And I'm gonna, it's gonna to do with transportation.
We need to get back on track.
Thank you. Let's go back. So let me recap. The consensus of this board is by three board members, trustee, Madam Clerk, Platoon Tarvin, Vice President Souders, and myself, that it should be $600 annually, which comes about to $60 a month. And that we should revisit this annually to ensure that we can communicate to families for the following school year. I think it is also important to reiterate to families that this is not going to happen immediately because of the short staffing and obstacles in finding bus drivers. Is that correct, Dr. Hanson?
Yes, I appreciate you making that comment. If the board gives me direction to proceed, we, there is no guarantee that we can make this happen until we can secure drivers.
Okay.
And it will, we'll ask families, we'll alert families, we'll ask families to complete an application. But then we'll have to take it on a case-by-case basis.
Okay. So once you have board direction, then you can go ahead and send this communication out, find out really what the interest of those families are, how many applicants we really have, and then continue to pursue finding a bus and all that. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. I saw your hand up, mister.
Just really quickly, that $113,000 amount, is that the salary for the driver?
No, that's what I wish to clarify before we close, what trustee Westwell commented. That's the cost to pay to the outside vendor. That's not, does not go in the driver's pocket.
Okay. Because I was like, I'll start driving soon if we get $113,000. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for clarifying, Dr. Hanson. Okay, so I think you have your board consensus.
Thank you.
Okay, and with that, we will go to the consent counter. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. We'll go to the vote. Trustee Briscoe.
Aye.
Madam Clerk.
Aye.
Vice President.
Aye.
Trustee Westwell.
Aye.
And I'm an aye. It passes 5-0 unanimously. And all business, we have none. So, oh, new business, oh, one. Educational Services Agreement for Transportation of Students with Disabilities as Determined by Individualized Education Programs, IEPs, is before us for action. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. Any discussion, trustee Briscoe. Madam Clerk.
No, thank you.
Vice President.
No, ma'am.
Trustee Westwell.
Yes, please.
Go ahead.
The public is aware. Can you confirm that this is required by law?
Yes.
Thank you. No other questions?
Okay, we'll go to the vote. Trustee Briscoe.
Aye.
Madam Clerk.
Aye.
Vice President.
Aye.
Trustee Westwell.
Aye.
And I'm an aye. It passes 5-0 unanimously. Oh, two. Educational Services Independent Contractor Agreement between Ocean View School District of Orange County and Growth Opportunities Through Athletics. Athletics. Learning and Service Goals for Healthy Futures is before us for action. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
There's a second?
Second.
Any discussion, trustee Briscoe?
None.
Madam Clerk?
No, thank you.
Vice President?
Uh, no.
Trustee Westwell?
Nope. Yes, I do.
Okay, go ahead.
I believe this money is much better spent on academic programs. I'll be voting no.
Okay. Trustee Briscoe, how do you vote?
Aye.
Madam Clerk?
Aye.
Vice President?
Aye.
Trustee Westwell?
Nay.
Okay, and I'm a yea. Four to one with trustee Westwell in opposition. Oh, three. Educational Services Independent Contractor Agreement between Ocean View School District of Orange County and Sea Change Therapy LLC for Speech Language Pathology Services is before us for action. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. Any discussion, trustee Briscoe?
None.
Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Go ahead.
So unfortunately, we have to contract out for speech-language pathology services because we don't have enough speech-language pathologists. And honestly, it's because we don't pay enough. I know that because I know some speech-language pathologists who stated that they wouldn't work for us. I'm sorry to say that. But so now we end up having to spend more because we can't find folks to do the job in-house. You know, I don't want to negotiate from the dais, but I wish we could do more to attract folks to the Ocean View School District because, in fact, we don't, we don't give raises that are huge. And in fact, our employees are the lowest paid in Orange County. Sad to say. Not proud of that.
Thank you. Vice President? Any, I was going through.
Oh, I have no comment.
Okay. Trustee Westwell? Any comments?
Thank you.
Okay.
What rate do we offer our employees? This is $85 an hour. What do we offer our employees?
Dr. Hanson, do you have that information?
No, it is on the teacher's salary, so I'd have to look that up. I don't have that in front of me.
Okay.
Did someone get back to me on that?
Yeah, we can get back to you on that.
What are the impacts of no speech pathologist or not enough speech pathologist? What's the impact to our district?
Dr. Hanson?
We would not be able to fulfill IEPs, which is required by law, which is what trustee Westwell asked in the previous item.
And so if we can't do that, what, how do we proceed? We physically can't find these people. We can't hire them. What do we do? We can't just turn away, kid. What do we do?
We work with our employees to take on more cases with the existing employees that we have.
Okay. And what's the total annual cost for speech pathologists?
You know, we have a practice in the district that if you're going to ask questions like this, that you ask ahead of time. I do not have that information handily ready, but I'd be happy to calculate that and give that to you.
You can just share.
16.8. We employ 16.8 speech-language pathologists district-wide. You go about $100,000 apiece, an average.
Okay. And a comment that was made earlier that we're the lowest paid in the district. I don't know if that's true or not. But when taxpayers look at that, they call that fiscal responsibility that we're spending taxpayer money wisely. So I just want to make sure that there's two sides to every coin. And when we say one thing, that there's a flip side to that. Fiscal responsibility is the flip side. That concludes my comments. Thank you.
Okay. We'll go to the vote. Trustee Briscoe.
Aye.
Madam Clerk?
Aye.
Vice President?
Aye.
Trustee Westwell?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. It passes 5-0 unanimously. Okay. Oh, four. Educational Services Independent Contractor Agreements between Ocean View School District of Orange County and Eileen Maida for Music Instructional at Golden View and Starview Schools is before us for action. Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion, trustee Briscoe?
None.
Madam Clerk?
No, thank you.
Vice President?
No.
Trustee Westwell? I have no discussion. We'll go to the vote. Trustee Briscoe.
Aye.
Madam Clerk?
Aye.
Vice President?
Aye.
Trustee Westwell?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. It passes 5-0 unanimously. Oh, five. Human Resources Resolution 10-2122. A resolution of the Board of Trustees of Ocean View School District of Orange County authorizing teaching assignments for the 2021-22 year. It's before us for information. No, it's before us for action. I'm sorry.
To approve.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion, trustee Briscoe?
None.
Madam Clerk?
No, thank you.
Vice President?
Just to say that, I know that, and this is not to, I'm not trying to belittle any of these teachers because I know they're phenomenal in their roles and what we're okaying them to do here. I'm just curious as to, I've seen some of these names before. Are we, are they pursuing, like, alternative degrees or even single subjects in any of these areas? Because I would be fully willing, as a board member, to vote in some sort of subsidy to get them to actually, because I've seen these names before. I know for sure Andrew Estrada's been here, and I know he's a phenomenal art teacher. If he was interested in pursuing a single subject in that, I would be okay with, you know, helping him out financially in terms of pursuing that goal. So I'm just curious, do we know if any of these teachers are pushing towards that? Or are we just board certifying them year after year?
We, I do not have a, I don't have a list of who is and who isn't. I know that some of them are. Keep in mind that we have very small middle schools. And so in order to find an art teacher, a fully credentialed art teacher, that's probably not what we need to employ at this time. So this is a more efficient way.
Oh, no, I understand the efficiency of it. That's not my concern. My concern is just, you know, same names over and over again. Maybe they want to do a little bit of outside education to actually pursue a subject that gives them that.
If that's something the district wants to subsidize and wants to entertain in the future, we have future discussions.
I'd be more interested in knowing if the people that are coming back year after year are interested in pursuing it.
I can do an analysis of it.
That would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, trustee Westwell.
Yeah, thank you. It shows here we have 14 teachers that are currently assigned to this. How many teachers did we have last year that were assigned?
19.
19 last year.
And are they pretty much the same teachers?
Some of them are the same.
Okay. I concur with trustee Souders on.
Again, it's about choices.
Development of these teachers.
It's about choices. Thank you. Yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, I worked in a junior high for 10 years, and I used to be one of those teachers that was asked to work out of my assignment area. So you're asked by the school district to work in an assignment that maybe you're not credentialed for. And you take on the assignments because you want to be a team player. It's not like, things get misconstrued, you know? The district asks you to do the job because they don't have anybody that can do the job because there are so few art teachers. Or when I started working, there were like almost zero secondary math teachers. So I worked teaching Algebra I, and I wasn't credentialed to do it. I worked teaching life science and wasn't credentialed to do it because I had a multiple subject. I ended up going back to college and getting a second credential myself. And I financed it myself. But I know that the state of California at one time was helping districts to subsidize, to help teachers who wanted to go and get certain credentials so that they could be working in their credentialed area. This was under George W. Bush's No Child Left Behind, if you recall that. And so, yeah, if that's one of the priorities we have for our teachers, and we want to make sure that folks are credentialed, like to teach home ec or art or woodshop or whatever it is that we don't really have in the district. You know, of course, that would be maybe a really great use of funds. Because right now, we're just asking folks to do favors for us that are not even credentialed in those areas. So thank you, teachers of the Ocean View School District, for taking on assignments that you may not be fully credentialed to teach, but that we know you're doing your best and you're qualified to do because you've been doing it for year after year. So, thank you. Mr. Vice President, you want to carry on and go to the vote?
I do, but I want to say that, again, I don't, my objective in stating that I'm fully in full support of them moving forward in their education is not that, I don't expect, for example, Jessica Holder to get a supplemental credential in yearbook. I'm perfectly fine board certifying her to take that position. And I do thank all these teachers for stepping in. And I know that that's what happens in district offices or district positions. I only wanted to say that if they are interested in pursuing it, because I know a lot of them probably would be, I would be in full support of helping them to pursue that. Because I know some of them have been doing the same position over and over again, year after year, and would probably like to take some classes to maybe further their education. So that's all I'm saying. Anyways, that concludes my comments.
Okay, we'll go to the vote. Trustee Briscoe.
Aye.
Madam Clerk?
Aye.
Vice President?
Aye.
Trustee Westwell?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. It passes 5-0 unanimously. Okay. Oh, six. Superintendent's Office for Resolution on CDPH Guidance for K-12 Schools. Let Them Breathe is before us for information. You have all received a copy of it? Okay. And with that, we will go to P. Any other public comments to the Board of Trustees?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution 10:2121.
Okay, is there a second? It dies for a lack of second. Okay. P. Any other public comments to the board? Yes.
Would you explain for the people huddled around their television what an information item is, what an action item is, and why the item is on the agenda in the form that it is? Because you set the agenda along with the superintendent. And what it means that we had the information, we read it, we looked at it. Deliberated it with a move to approve it that died for a lack of second. Would you explain that, please?
Sure. When an agenda item is placed before us as an information item, it is literally that. It's an information item for us to have in front of us, to review, to ensure that we understand it. When an item is agendized as an action item, that means the board is going to actually take a decision on it. There would be a first and a second. There would be some deliberation, discussion on it, and then we would all vote on it. This item was agendized as an information item. A board member made a motion to move it to be an action item. It would have required a second in order to do that, since there wasn't. It dies, and it goes back to what it was originally agendized as, as just an information item. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. And with that, we'll go on to P. Any other public comments to the Board of Trustees, Madam Clerk?
Madam President, we have no other comments this evening.
Great. Q. Future agenda items as requested by board members. Trustee Briscoe.
None.
Madam Clerk?
No, thank you.
Vice President?
None.
Trustee Westwell?
Yes, Madam President, I'd like to see this board discuss academic achievement and the way that we're going to determine academic achievement. Now that we're not using the CAS test anymore, we're using the IE, whatever it is, the simplified version. So I'd like to have board discussion about how we can properly evaluate academic achievement in the future. Thank you.
Okay. I believe that the I-ready was only used last year, but we will be using the CAS testing this year. Is that correct? Dr. Hanson, Dr. Hofer, can either of you clarify that for me, please?
We will. We have not shared with the board recent academic results. And that will be done at the end of October, the second meeting in October. But that will be based on the I-ready scores because that's all that we have from the last year.
From last year.
And also what students are assessing, as I commented in my comments this evening. And also what students are, are assessing, as I commented in my comments this evening right now. So that's the most current assessment data.
Will, will we be using that I-ready as a way of assessing our kids this year?
Yes. I'll let Dr. Hofer.
Okay.
Explain.
As well as the Casper's test.
Thank you.
Later in the spring. Okay, thank you. I just, I know that I-ready was a way to get us going and setting some direction, but then we will be doing it. I just wanted to make sure.
But to clarify, I-ready was used as a state assessment.
Last, last year.
Right. But in order to give you a report of how our students are doing, all we have right now is the I-ready. So we will give you an update on, based on those assessments, and it will help us plan for instruction in, in, in preparation for the students to take the state assessment in the spring.
Thank you. I just.
As you know, we usually don't till the following fall give results because we don't get those until the summer.
Correct. Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that we're using I-ready for an update, but we are going to be doing a state testing this school year. I just didn't want the public to misunderstand that that was not going to happen. Yes.
So my, the interest in my agenda item would be to contrast and compare against those two different testing methods. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Weswell. Okay, let's, did I see your hand up? Yes.
Well, just a, a point of information. It's a mandate to take CAS tests this school year. I want to be very clear. I don't, it's not clear to me that if I were listening to this meeting as a, a person in the community, that that's what's going to happen. And by the way, you can't compare I-ready test to CAS. They're totally different sorts of tests. The data's different and the, and remember that kids are, it's a snapshot in a day, a day in the life, and kids took tests during a pandemic. Let's be careful. Although I'd like to see the data as well, just to see it for what it is singularly. Thank you.
Thank you.
For.
Just as a point of information, so that I'm clear and maybe the public's clear, the I-ready is more of an ongoing assessment taken throughout the year at different times, correct, to judge where students are in math and ELA? Whereas the CAS test is a state test taken at the end of the year. Is that correct? Am I mistaken in that?
No, you are, you are correct. I just wanted to clarify that usually we provide you an update on the CAS results. We, we can't do that this year. So that's why the update, the next update you'll have will be based on I-ready results.
Got it. Thank you.
And as, as board clerk Clayton Tarvin pointed out, we will take the statewide CAS assessment in the spring of twenty twenty-two.
Thank you.
Thank you for the clarification, Dr. Hanson. No escaping it this year. We're doing it. Okay. Okay, so that okay, and with that, we will now go to our Board of Trustees' roundtable. Trustee Briscoe.
I have two things to comment on. One is that my son is a master's degree student with a teaching credential, and he's substituting, and he has delightedly substituted back in his favorite school district at his favorite school, Marine View. Well, he liked Village U2. He was able to say hello and talk to Mr. Henderson, or Hendo, Mr. Becker, and Mr. Munoz. He had outstanding teaching staff there. He was able to see those people during the day. And had a great time. Ocean View pays the lowest substitute teaching rate. Capo Unified pays a hundred ninety-five dollars a day, and I believe we pay one twenty-five or one thirty. I pointed out to him that it's a forty-dollar, twenty to forty-dollar ride to get down to the job in Capo Unified. So he said, yeah, yeah, right, right. And he's still my son. So that's the, my son part, and he loves working in Ocean View School District. And so there's that. The second is, I spent a week of my life at summer camp as an adult chaperone to a Boy Scout troop. And the scout master asked me to be responsible for the bank where the scouts turn in all their money, and then they can check it out whenever they want, so they don't lose it during the day. Half the troop goes to Westminster School District. Half my troop doesn't know how to sign their initials because Westminster School District apparently has made teaching cursive optional. Wasn't that delightful? Half the boys had to print and block print clunky, chunky their initials when they took the money out. Students in my Ocean View School District could all write in cursive. I want to commend our superintendent and our teaching staff in third grade for teaching our students cursive writing. Thank you. They're not able to ta, to type until fourth and fifth grade. Cursive is perfectly placed. It's a state law. It's a standard that we teach our children cursive, and we're doing that in Ocean View. So thank you, Dr. Hanson, and all of our instructional staff at our school sites. We also have something in our district that other school districts don't have, and that's a, a downloadable at-home typing program. Preferably late fourth grade, early fifth grade, the research says, for sure, fifth grade. Every family in our listening voice here and everybody in our system should be encouraging our families to have their children download, download the typing program so they can begin to learn the skills they're going to need to be very successful in high school and college. Home row, quarti typing, forty-five words a minute, the gift that keeps on giving for the rest of their life. That concludes my comments.
Thank you, trustee Briscoe. Madam Clerk. Thank you, Madam President. Recently, I, I saw some discussion in the community online in a place, again, that I was tagged in on Facebook to weigh in about some issue that actually I want to give the Board of Trustees here, all five of us, credit because we have continued to make open space and saving open space a priority in the city of Huntington Beach, Westminster, Fountain Valley, and Midway City. Unfortunately, the, I was told that the Huntington Beach City School District has decided to sell one of their school sites against the will, apparently, of many in the community. And there was a discussion by the folks that run AYSO Region Fifty-Six, saying now they have nowhere, they're going to have nowhere to play sports, have their soccer league. And there was a, a robust discussion from folks from all sorts of the political spectrum about saving open space. And the discussion about affordable housing, and that in fact, this is, this project supposedly is not affordable housing. The homes are going to go between one point five and two million dollars. So that's hardly affordable and doesn't meet the mandates that the governor and the state legislature has put forth. So I want to congratulate this Board of Trustees for always, always saving open space. In two thousand fifteen, we convened a seven eleven committee. And even though the committee came with a report saying that we should sell some of our property to deal with paying back the cops' bonds, loans that we took to fix Oak, Hope, and Lake, we did something different. We decided to not sell our school sites and not sell open space for development. We decided instead to use the funds that were coming in and still coming in two point two million dollars that can only be used for capital improvements or to pay back debt. Can't be used for salaries or anything like that. We use that money to pay back those cops' bonds to reconstruct the schools that had been affected by asbestos. We decided to then ask the community to pass a bond to shoulder bond debt, and we said we would not, we would not sell open space if they made that commitment to pass the bond. And we have kept our commitment. I'm proud of this board, all of you. Thank you for being the champions of the environment and in saving open space. We got a lot of compliments last night. It's not always a, a negative thing on social media. Many times it's positive, and the Ocean View School District, this board is known for being the champions of not only saving open space, but of providing youth sports playing fields in HB. We're number one. So thank you, board. Thank you, Vice President Souders.
I have no comments.
Okay, trustee, I know, trustee Weswell.
Thank you. I wasn't going to say anything, but what my colleague to the left just mentioned our sports fields and our sports groups that we support, youth sports. And recently, I've had communication with one of the, one of the directors of AYSO, I believe it's fifth, Region Fifty-Six, it's in our area. And he commented to me that he's very concerned about the state of our fields kiddos are playing on. And he specifically told me it's not really the brown grass, lack of watering, it's the gopher holes. He's afraid one of these kids is going to break an ankle or twist an ankle or somehow hurt themselves on the numerous holes in our fields that are not being tended to. I haven't personally looked at this, but he expressed, he, he took the time to express the concern to me, so I'm taking the time to express it to the board and our superintendent, so you're all aware of it. That the, the AYSO is concerned about the safety of our kids on the fields. So I would hope that someone takes a look at those fields and makes a determination whether they're safe or not. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing that. We appreciate it. It, it is true. It is commendable, and it is, I am very proud of us that we continue to provide playing field for our students. And yes, we want to make sure those fields are safe. And yes, we could do better in watery and taking care of them. We know that. But the fact that we continue to provide field usage for our community is, is commendable because I know nearby boards don't do that. In fact, the city of Huntington Beach doesn't do that. It's all for adult leagues only. Those beautiful, complex fields they have out there, it's literally adult. It's not for kiddos. At least not citywide. So I think it is great that we continue to do that. So I'm happy to hear the consensus of this board that our Marine View families will be hopefully sooner than later have the option of transportation. I'm really hoping that the families will really sign up for transportation and that it does not become a huge issue. And that we do have serious interest of those families. I think with six hundred dollars annually, making it sixty dollars monthly, I think it is very doable for most, most families. So I hope that this addresses some of the concern. And I also want to commend this board because we do make choices, and sometimes the choices we make are not popular ones, and they are difficult ones. But I think ultimately, what it comes down to, we always want to do what's best for our community, our kids. And safety is something that drives our decision process making, and we, and that's why we are considering transportation. We are concerned with the safety of our students. Though we understand that it is an unfunded liability, and it does become an equity issue. But we hear the community, and so because of that, that is why this board took it up and discussed it and deliberated. So I hope the community sees that, that we, we try to listen. We're not always going to make decisions that are popular or that are pleasing to everybody. But we are doing the best we can to ensure that the needs of our communities are, are addressed. So with that, I will conclude my comments. Oh, this is the best part for trustee Briscoe's ready.
We're going back to closed session.
We are not going back to closed session. Oh, we are going back to closed session. Ooh.
This is not my favorite part.
You're right. We are going back to closed session. So with that, let us see, at eight fifty-seven, the Board of Trustees is going back to closed session. And we will report out from
We will.
Madam President, we will report out. I will go out the door here at Building A and report anything that becomes actionable. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay.